Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Commission Chair Daniel Weir. This will be the first of two evenings scheduled for our public hearings this month. Tonight, we'll be hearing two items. First, the Commission will hear the proposed Pentagon City Sector Plan and associated amendments to the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance, General Land Use Plan, and Master Transportation Plan. After that, the Commission will hear a request under the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code for a use permit and rezoning of the site located at 2601 Columbia Pike. At our carryover meeting tomorrow night, February 3rd, the Commission will be hearing requests related to the Marbella development and covering other Commission administrative business. If you are online tonight for the Marbella project, please note that we will not be hearing or discussing that project tonight. So some items required to share now. For the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding tonight's meeting virtually. So welcome to our Commissioners, County Staff, any applicants, and community members who are joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the, based on executive orders, legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly, and the county, county board's continuity of operations ordinance adopted in March 2020. So before we begin, a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon Fios Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If Commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. I understand that you can use the phone number five up in the team's invite, and registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. And once you've spoken, please turn your cameras off, and if you're dialing in by phone, please press star six to unmute. Commissioners, when the items before us tonight come to the Commission for discussion, I will call on each Commissioner in turn, and we'll call on each Commissioner twice for each item of discussion. I will call on Commissioners in alphabetical order by last name, and when called upon, please turn on your video and unmute yourself before you speak, even if you wish only to pass or associate yourself with remarks made by other Commissioners. If you have an urgent matter that you need to raise before your next turn in speaking order, please raise your hand, but please do so judiciously as we must steward our time tonight carefully, given the volume of material to be covered tonight and speakers who wish to be heard. To public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers this evening. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. A speaking timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk, and if you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we'll provide you with an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or Commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, requests for more information, et cetera. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. And lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website, and all information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call tonight's first item?
Thank you. Our first item for the evening is the Pentagon City Sector Plan, which is our agenda item number one. We have Matt Matuzik, our project manager, to present this item this evening.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. Matuzik. Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Before I get started, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Matt Matuzik, and I'm with the Planning Division. I'm also joined tonight by several other staff from the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development, the Department of Environmental Services, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. And we will be discussing the Pentagon City Planning Study as it concludes culminating in the adoption of a sector plan and its associated implementation actions. As noted in the staff report, this item reflects four key components associated with the Pentagon City Study, specifically the Pentagon City Sector Plan and its associated amendments to key policy documents, which will ensure it can begin to be implemented immediately. Today's presentation will highlight each of those components as well as the process that the planning effort has completed to date. I realize not everyone may be as familiar with the study, and therefore, we wanted to begin first with providing some background information to ensure we have a common starting point, something I suspect anyone watching may also benefit from. So with that, let me first begin by establishing a little background on Arlington's planning framework. In Arlington, the planning and zoning framework that collectively guides growth and development in the community includes numerous plans, ordinances, and other regulatory and policy documents that generally fall into five main categories. The inverse pyramid that's shown here is deliberately depicted to have the broadest and bigger picture elements at the wider top, with the more site-specific development and investment-related elements at the bottom. With this hierarchy, we begin with the comprehensive plan up top, followed by the general land use plan, followed by sector and area plans, and later the capital improvement plan. Finally, with the zoning ordinance, which allows for site plans, which are reviewed at a special exception site plan level. I should note that this exhibit may somewhat oversimplify the relationship between some of these elements, and it also doesn't specify or identify the individual plans and regulations and other documents at play in influencing Arlington's built environment. I would also point out that, per the vertical fading arrows that you see on the left, the elements at the top are working down to have greater emphasis and basis in planning, while the elements at the bottom, working way, their way up, have greater emphasis in implementation. But as an overall concept, this graphic helps to set the stage for what we typically can expect in sector plans, considering the many other documents which help inform policy decisions, funding, and ultimately, how we may experience the built environment in Arlington. Specific to the general land use plan, the county has adopted numerous area-specific plans that support the comprehensive plan and provide greater clarity and vision for achieving our goals and policies, but also accomplishing this across a discrete geographic area throughout the county. Such plans guide site plan and use permit decisions, and also help guide the informed and inform the investments and other public improvements. Sector plans and area plans in particular will often have elements that have been incorporated into the zoning ordinance, the general land use plan, the master transportation plan, and other elements to help establish consistency between such plans and as means of implementing the vision and recommendations that are set forth in those documents. So those site-specific plans I noted earlier generally involve the county's three major planning corridors, where most of the sector, area, and revitalization plans exist today. There are certainly other portions of the county where significant planning is taking place. However, for tonight's purposes, I wanted to highlight how other metro station areas in the county have produced similar planning guidance as what has been produced in Pentagon City through this effort. While not noted on the slide, I would also acknowledge that there is a presence of phased development site plans, or PDSPs as they are called, throughout the county. While they may serve multiple purposes, those which previously captured a similar planning effort involving the community can be found in the Potomac Yard area, Sherrlington, and Pentagon City, based on past planning efforts. So in addition to that framework, I also wanted to briefly touch on why this study was initiated in the first place. Following Amazon's 2018 decision to locate their second headquarters in Arlington, there has been considerable attention given to how those headquarters may shape the immediate vicinity in which they will be located. During that time, various stakeholders also began to consider how the surrounding Pentagon City neighborhood should react to this new reality. Much of the development surrounding Pentagon City metro station has been guided by earlier planning efforts that date back to the 1970s, which established the original mixed-use vision for this area. This is what we refer to as the Pentagon City Phased Development Site Plan, or PDSP, which at the time preceded any sector or area plan work by county planners. Since that policy document has only undertaken one major update back in 1997, and considering the impact Amazon's arrival will have on this area, it was determined in April 2019 that a comprehensive analysis of key Pentagon City properties would be most appropriate. The resulting approach was initially shared with the Long Reach Planning Committee at the start of 2020, and was followed by a selection process to identify a consultant team that county staff will work with. While all of this was taking place, the 22202 community began to collaborate with the help of representatives from each of the three civic associations, who initiated an effort to help the county identify quality of life expectations that should be addressed with future growth in this area, something that was already anticipated at the time from the Amazon HQ2 decision. The livability initiative continues still, but prior to the pandemic actually involved a series of workshops, presentations, seminars, tours, and publicly accessible meetings to ensure a cohesive set of priorities could be identified. The resulting action plan, which was issued in late 2019, is referenced later in this presentation as we demonstrate how the sector plan helps memorialize a number of those priorities. So with that understanding, we next want to highlight the extensive engagement that has occurred with the community and other stakeholders over the last 18 months. To aid in this study, county staff has first enlisted the help of a consultant team very familiar with Arlington County, and also established a focus group comprised of various stakeholder representatives. The focus group was chaired by the Planning Commissioner Lantelme and former Planning Commissioner Siegel. As you can see here, broad perspectives were intentionally invited to these discussions to ensure the necessary consensus building could occur. Throughout the study, this group helped facilitate many thoughtful conversations and offered insightful feedback on all aspects of the Pentagon City Sector Plan. I would also like to acknowledge the contributions of our biophilia subcommittee, who ensured this element would be highlighted throughout the sector plan and informed how this policy document could help educate others on the various interpretations and benefits of biophilia. While that list captured everyone who at some point contributed to our analysis and the broader public engagement, I would also like to highlight what the typical focus group environment looked like as we met on a monthly basis during the first year of the study. You can see the distribution of stakeholder groups in this exhibit, and also our study document website, where all the materials were posted immediately after each meeting concluded to make sure there was broader awareness of that material. Beginning in the summer of 2020, the first 12 months of the planning process began with stakeholder interviews, leading to a formal community kickoff meeting and five additional public workshops. Beyond this broader public outreach, the focus group I just mentioned continued to meet on a monthly basis through July of last year. Staff and consultants also utilized virtual office hours in the second half of the process to ensure additional opportunities were available to discuss feedback. All of this occurred virtually, with one exception in June of this year, of last year, where the biophilia subcommittee held a quite successful walking tour covering the entire study area. As the framework of the plan became available and early drafts were developed, staff began to brief various committees and commissions throughout the fall of 2021. We also facilitated a successful virtual opening house in October, which was followed by three-week online engagement opportunity to solicit further feedback. Staff also presented this content to the Planning Commission and Housing Commission prior to the request to advertise that took place in December of last year with the county board. The online feedback window, in response to the last version that was issued around Thanksgiving, spanned approximately five weeks, ending in December 31st, and responses to which have been captured in the comment response matrix that was released along with the updated sector plan. To put that outreach into further perspective, the slide here also helps track the progression of the draft plan dating back to its initial framework last summer, and all the way through the winter, where we just released the fourth version in early 2022. So next, I'm going to highlight some key components of the sector plan just to introduce the document to everyone who may not be as familiar with it. Consistent with that 2019 county board guidance, the planning effort focused on most of the parcels historically governed by the Pentagon City Phased Development Site Plan, PDSP, as well as the adjacent River House property along Joy Street. I should note that the study area excludes the block where the Costco store is located, as this is regulated by a separate planning document called the Pentagon Center Phased Development Site Plan, and its vision was established in 2015, and is slowly beginning to be implemented as they progress through their long-term growth strategy, with the second residential building still in the construction. Historically, this block was also not part of the 1970s Pentagon City vision due to its industrial uses and separate ownership at the time. Given the recent development activity, either completed or under construction within the metropolitan park block, the planning study also did not focus its recommendations on that parcel. Consistent with the intended purpose, the sector plan outlines the updated vision for Pentagon City and conditions under which future growth should occur, including updates to adopted policies necessary to facilitate its implementation. It does so by relying on several key components, which we're going to outline next. This outline really highlights how the sector plan has incorporated key analysis and content previously requested by the community. For today's presentation, I would also like to focus on two sections in particular, the vision and the development framework, before moving forward. But as we do that, it's also worth highlighting the planning analysis summary that is strategically located early on in the sector plan. I would really encourage everyone to read through this section as it sets the stage for the rest of the plan and captures the level of analysis and broad range of topics that were addressed throughout this process. This included a new and succinct vision statement for the study area, but one which also highlights the context in which this work is taking place. This approach, as well as many elements of the sector plan, reflect key priorities that were first introduced through the livability 22202 outreach, conducted by those three civic associations that I mentioned earlier, well in advance of this planning process. In response to feedback collected in December, the vision statement also references the multimodal transportation options in addition to the other priorities noted throughout the plan. The division is supported by six planning principles, which emphasize a number of guiding elements that were established early on in the process and which we hope will continue to inform the implementation of the sector plan moving forward. Their true value is really helping subsequent processes and policy decisions consider trade-offs and identify opportunities for compromises where competing priorities may exist. While particularly crafted with, for the purposes of the sector plan and its planning study area, the six principles are not that dissimilar from the five priorities established earlier by the livability 22202 initiative. Elements which may not directly appear as individual principles in this plan likely are represented as supporting elements or can be further found elsewhere in the sector plan. Now, these next series of slides shift gears towards the sector plan's development framework. It has been strategically organized to correspond with the progression of our planning effort. Once those draft planning principles were developed, the planning study next prioritized improvements to the area's connectivity before other aspects, aspects of this plan could be considered. The exhibit on this slide captures the resulting network of pathways, or green ribbons as they are labeled, that intentionally account for several existing buildings that are expected to remain while strategically weaving key sections of the study area together. The green ribbon branding found in the sector plan is also intended to improve the identity for this area. Our hope is that, as key segments of this network become realized, Pentagon City can eventually become known for this cohesive, publicly accessible network. Beyond the general location of these pathways, visual representations, and cross-sectional diagrams help set proper expectations for how individual property owners can respond to these and deliver critical segments of this network. These are supported by a broad design menu found in the plan's appendix, which will also allow each site to uniquely interpret this feature to ensure it fits within their development program. The updated sector plan speaks to the need and expectation for all segments of the green ribbon to implement a cohesive wayfinding strategy that helps reinforce the entire network. Another critical aspect of this plan is its focus on enhancing everyone's access to public spaces. This is achieved by establishing several public plazas, parks, and utilizing the green ribbon network as a connective thread through multiple private properties. Just as importantly, the relocation of the southern segment of Joy Street onto the River House property will help achieve an additional acre of public park space that represents a critical enhancement that would inform future master planning efforts for Virginia Highlands Park. With respect to private properties that may redevelop, the sector plan next reserves a minimum percentage of the site area that must first address vegetation and tree canopy. These figures have been carefully crafted to ensure a balanced approach between an aggressive standard to support long-term growth, while also considering unique site challenges that will inform individual development feasibility. The minimum standards are also customized to reflect uniqueness of the River House site located on the western edge of the study area as compared to the adjacent properties located to the east and which were historically governed by the Pentagon City PDSP. Once those figures were established, the planning effort next focused on how the remainder of this site could redevelop across the study area. This was captured by specific B-02 zones for each property and associated massing diagrams to express permitted conditions at both the podium and tower segments of the buildings. Transportation, when compared to the other three components of the sector plan's development framework, occupies more than twice as much content here, given the role it played in the study. It is supported by a traffic analysis that began prior to the planning effort. It continued throughout last year as the vision for a preferred future land use scenario became identified. The transportation recommendations focus on enforcing an aggressive mode split that limits single occupancy vehicles to represent only 30% of each project's trips in the near term, while limiting this mode share even further to just 25% with midterm and long-term projects. This approach also emphasizes the reliance on a broader multimodal network as a key to accommodating future growth in this area. As Pentagon City grows over the next several decades, it is anticipated that sites within the study area may contribute as much as 10 million additional square feet of development. As that occurs, the area's land use mix is expected to evolve and deliver more residential uses, while generally accommodating a similar percentage of hotel and commercial uses as we see today. It's important to know that these figures are predicated on several assumptions and market conditions which may change over time and will require regular monitoring to ensure the accuracy of our forecast data. The footprints shown here in white represent redevelopment opportunities that could begin to implement the updated vision for Pentagon City. Again, these are just illustrative exhibits and not meant to be regulatory in nature, similar to other exhibits found in the sector plan, to assist with the visualization of how this area can transform. Based on regular discussions with key stakeholders, our modeling and understanding of the redevelopment opportunities are highlighting key aspects of the River House property, the Fashion Center site, and the Brookfield block located along 12th Street, which would collectively represent near-term opportunities. In exchange for access to the density we just covered, redevelopment will need to make strategic contributions to Pentagon City, which also benefit the broader 22202 neighborhood. The draft sector plan identifies what this means for each property, and to the degree possible, attempts to highlight if improvements are anticipated in near term or further into the future. Those details will reflect a strategy which prioritizes public space and infrastructure improvements so that they are delivered at the time of the site plan development. The remaining residual value of the new density will focus on achieving sustainability goals found in the Community Energy Plan and on-site contributions to affordable housing. As this tour concludes, we also want to revisit the livability action plan to highlight where the sector plan has captured some key priorities. The green ribbon network, in concert with other plan recommendations, will help achieve a number of concepts originally identified by this group in 2019. Additionally, minimum sustainability levels of lead gold in the plan surpass the levels outlined in the action plan, while key recommendations associated with community facilities are also reflected in the implementation matrix of the sector plan. Finally, another noteworthy element of the plan is represented by the implementation matrix, where over 20 items are organized by themes and identified or labeled by their recommended timing. This first page that you can see on the screen simply reflects some of those immediate actions that will accompany the sector plan when the county board considers it later this month. Beyond some of the immediate steps to implement the sector plan, a number of subsequent studies are identified to address unresolved issues and challenges. Some of these were previously identified by work conducted through the livability initiative, while others were identified during the course of our work. Many of these will require additional resources or perhaps an independent process with unique stakeholders involved beyond what is typically taking place in a sector plan process. At the start of the presentation, we noted several actions that will accompany the sector plan to ensure it could be implemented immediately. I'll briefly cover those next. Starting with the general land use plan map, staff's recommendations include several adjustments to ensure consistency with the sector plan. These include a number of land use designation changes and expansion of Note Number Four, which will be renamed, as well as the introduction of multiple public space symbols indicating general locations of future parks and plazas. Supporting language will also be incorporated into the GLEP booklet, where the Pentagon City section will be expanded to capture the current planning effort. We're also using the opportunity to reflect the recent agreement between Amazon and Arlington County on the public facilities map. This will involve a new symbol indicating the planned location of the Arlington community. This will involve a new symbol indicating the planned location of the Arlington Community High School. The master transportation plan amendments involve an expansion of the blue-stripped area depicting future connections so that it corresponds with the planning study area we've been using during this process. The preview of those changes, as shown here, also represents a reclassification of a two-block segment of 12th Street to more closely align with its current purpose, which involves transitway expansion. The study area is currently comprised of two zoning districts, which would remain but will now include references regarding site eligibility, consistent with the updated GLEP note number four. A new special planning area would also be added to Article 9, capturing essential information from the Pentagon City Sector Plan, including the vision, applicability requirements, and criteria for accessing additional density. The next series of slides is intended to highlight just some of the key changes that were incorporated into the latest version of the sector plan. I'll go through these quickly, but happy to answer questions later as we begin the discussion. In response to recommendations by the Transportation and Planning Commission, staff has revised the 15th Street corridor to reflect the possibility of a future separated bike way in this important corridor between Pentagon City and Crystal City. You can see this change on the map later in the report on the draft sector plan. As an additional adjustment, staff will also introduce a similar update to this map along the realigned segment of Joy Street, as was recommended by the Transportation Commission. In addition, the updated sector plan also includes a number of adjustments to the tables detailing future street and path networks in Pentagon City. Among several changes, acknowledgements of interim conditions for future accessways was identified as possible and in some cases anticipated, given the different timing for many of the projects being delivered. In response to feedback, staff has also made several clarifying adjustments to the maps indicating the general location for future parks and plazas and the alignment of the green ribbon network. These also include a simplified legend to ensure proper and improved legibility of this content throughout the sector plan. Past revisions of the sector plan throughout the fall continue to reduce the permitted building heights on the site. However, this last version directly speaks to the existing tree canopy found on the River House property. While the analysis always presumed much of these areas would be preserved, it's clear the sector plan should be more explicit in highlighting the limits of development along the western and southern edges of this property. We believe with these revisions, coupled with the existing buildings that will be remaining, much of the potential redevelopment will focus on the surface parking lots that exist there today. In response to several suggestions and a motion by the planning commission, staff has also introduced a new page to the sector plan, which adequately acknowledges the national landing bid and the broader definition of that term, which includes the city of Alexandria. Staff received a number of suggestions to further clarify the need to expand some of the existing community facilities, which the updated sector plan reflects within the development framework. Specifically, the community center and library are identified as qualifying community benefits that meet the plan goals, should there be any opportunity to incorporate them into any near-term redevelopment. However, should those opportunities prove unsuccessful, the plan's implementation matrix ensures both uses, along with the new elementary school, are included in a subsequent master planning effort for the Virginia Highlands Park. While it is anticipated that some sections of the green ribbon will look different from one another, as each developer decides how best to utilize the plan's design guidelines, the updated sector plan acknowledges the need for a cohesive branding effort to ensure all segments can be easily identifiable. Given the national landing bids work plan, this work should be closely coordinated between this group and county staff as initial developments begin to come forward. Lastly, the affordable housing section has been expanded to clarify how the onsite requirement may be satisfied in instances where only infill development is proposed or if ownership units are included in the site plan application. Finally, we wanted to conclude with highlighting the remaining schedule and staff's recommendation. Following tonight's hearing, the Housing Commission will consider the updated sector plan and its implementation actions tomorrow evening. Staff has also scheduled a virtual listening session for Monday evening, where any outstanding comments can be presented for further consideration as the plan is finalized. This is a new meeting that was not highlighted earlier, but realize there's a lot of comments continuing to come in since the latest plan was released. And of course, we are scheduled to be heard by the county board on Saturday, February 12th. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to adopt the following elements associated with the Pentagon City Planning Study: resolution to adopt the Pentagon City Sector Plan, the resolution to amend the general land use plan, public facilities map, and GLEP booklet, resolution to amend the master transportation plan map, and the ordinance to amend Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 6.5, multifamily dwelling district, Article 712, mixed-use district, and Article 9, special planning area regulations. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matizik. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do. Let me pull up my roster and share my screen.
Yes.
Okay. Our first speaker is Bernard Byrne, followed by Jennifer Pence.
Hello, yes. This, this Bernie Byrne. This, although biophilia was supposed to be a major feature of this, and it's touted in a lot, it really doesn't, this whole thing is not very biophilic. For one thing, I made a number of comments during this public engagement period that just weren't put in there. First of all, the green ribbon is not going to be green. If you look at one of those illustrative things, it says, "General C wide paved area sidewalk." This looks like this would be a wide sidewalk and very little strip of green on either side. You really have to make define that better. Second of all, the Virginia Highland Park, as I mentioned, is really very unbiophilic. It's grow, it's mowed grass, and it's playing fields. There's, I suggested that this be, said, put meadows in there, more trees. This was not done. There's no change at all as to the Virginia Highland Park, expect to expand it, which will have the same, probably have the same thing, just mowed grass and maybe some playing Another example, the Grace Hopper Park. If you look at it, it's really not a park. It's expanded, it's a plaza with pavement. Some green areas, but mostly new pavement. You're converting most of the park into a plaza. There's a big difference. There are other plazas in this area, which are also could be green. They're not. The ground cover, it's a minimum of additional 5% vegetated ground cover at that ground level. And then another 5%, which generally above ground won't be seen by the community. Very little new ground cover is going to be added to this that will be visible to the community. No upcoming for meadows, milkweeds, things like this. This is because of how it is to be a planet, despite it's supposed to be biophilic. Again, the upper, the northern portion of the River House, hybrid residential GLEP designation. You say that could be, a plant to be only on the parking lot. I doubt that it will. Where's the, and where is the green area? Nothing is specified, a green area next to that. No biophilia. The neighbors comfused vigorously against this high-density residential. Why don't you listen to them? The other, the other thing is, yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, that's probably about it, but the main thing is that, if you're going to do something with Virginia Highland Park, that has to be in there, about converting that to something more biophilic. It's really one of the worst parks of biophilia there is. It's, as I said, it's playing area and also mowed grass. That's got to be changed. Similarly, the plaza at Grace Hopper should not be, get rid of all that pavement and specify that really be biophilic and green with vegetated areas and meadows, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Pence, followed by Ben Diavanzo.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pence. I live at the Horizon House, 1300 Army Navy Drive. I'm a member of the Association Board of Directors, but I'm here speaking on my own behalf and not on behalf of the Association. I've lived in Pentagon City for over 12 years, and my comments on the Pentagon City Sector Plan is based on my experiences living in this neighborhood. Overall, I strongly support the objectives and priorities of the proposed plan and have comments on just a few areas. I'm happy to see the emphasis on increased pedestrian and bicycle access throughout the neighborhood. Living on the far western edge of Pentagon City, it is not easy to navigate through the neighborhood. There are several large pieces of infrastructure, like the shopping mall, Costco, government buildings, that prevent quick access on foot or bicycle from one part of the neighborhood to another. Just getting to the post office on foot is like running a gauntlet. Traveling by bike is downright hazardous. Additionally, being outside should be a pleasurable experience. I am encouraged by the plan's emphasis on tree canopy and green space, and I think those elements will make running errands a much more pleasurable experience and will hopefully get people like myself out of our cars. I also fully support the plan to increase the number of buildings on the River House property. The existing surface parking lots are a total waste of space, and the county desperately needs more housing. Along the lines of my first point, those of us living on the western edge of the neighborhood often transit through the River House property on our way to Pentagon Row or to the metro. South Lynn Street, while the border of the sector plan, is not the border of the neighborhood. I'm encouraged by the planned paths and greenway connecting through the River House property to the western part of the neighborhood and would encourage the county to also think about orienting some of the buildings on the River House property to South Lynn Street in order to solidify this cohesiveness. A related point and one that is very important to me personally is the need to diversify the types of housing offered in the sector plan. Diverse neighborhoods are vibrant neighborhoods. The sector plan has an opportunity to not just increase the density of Pentagon City, but increase it in a diverse way that meets the needs of a wide variety of current and potential residents. The missing middle study doesn't apply to just existing neighborhoods dominated by single-family homes. It also applies to Pentagon City. I would encourage the county to get creative. I strongly support the sector plan and would be even happier to see the objectives and principles of the missing middle study to be more fully represented.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Ben Diavanzo, followed by Adam Theo.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ben Diavanzo, and I am a Pentagon City resident, and I have also been the representative for Aurora Island Civic Association on this project, although in this case I am speaking just for myself and not for the Civic Association. There's a lot to like in this plan, a lot to be excited about. I definitely think there are areas for improvement and would encourage those as well. To highlight some of the benefits, I think we badly need increased housing in our neighborhood, both market rate and affordable, given the thousands of new employees coming from Amazon and other employers that are very highly paid, and they are going to drive up rents and they're going to drive up housing costs. New housing will help to offset that, and the 10% affordable housing threshold is particularly exciting. I am also glad to see the emphasis on new bike lanes and new pedestrian passageways, although set areas such as 12th Street could use more bike lanes and areas such as non-priority public accessways could use wider sidewalks under this plan. I also want to speak to the open space. It is unfortunate that there is not large expansions of open space under this plan, like we did see in the original 1970s plan, which doubled or more the size of Virginia Highlands Park. But being said, this plan takes currently very underutilized open spaces, like Grace Murray Hopper Park, like the plaza outside the Nordstrom, and like the walkways within the TSA buildings and improves them, and that is something definitely to be excited about. I also think this plan could do a lot better when it comes to community facilities. Thanks to neighborhood input, there are a lot more specificity in this plan, and I think it's one of the first ones, if not the, that actually lists student generation counts. Still, a lot of decisions are being put on the Virginia Highlands Park master planning process to not only plan the park, but to make decisions about the future location of a school, library, community center, orientation of Joy Street, and potential pavilion on what is now Grace Murray Hopper Park. That is just too much for what a normal master park planning process would look like, and there should be something a bit broader. I also want to speak to community input. This plan offered a lot of opportunities for in-depth discussion, especially for those of us who are willing to put a lot of time into it. I think the kind of feedback shows that the county can do better in reaching a much broader audience, including folks who aren't able to read 100-plus-page documents. And so would encourage the county to invest more in that area, and perhaps that means hiring some more communications staff. Overall, though, this plan has a lot to like, and I think that the county should really move forward on it while also evaluating opportunities to strengthen open space, community facilities, pedestrian access, as well as improving the way that we incentivize people to get out of their cars and onto bikes and multimodal vehicles. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diavanzo.
Our next speaker is Adam Theo, followed by Joe James.
Good evening. My name is Adam Theo, housing advocate and independent candidate for county board. I share the concerns of residents of Rizborough House Apartments and nearby condo buildings regarding potential loss of trees, wooded walking path, and already completed park space. Too much of our county's growth has come at the expense of open spaces and our tree canopy, and I believe that any future development of the River House site should try to focus on reusing surface parking lots and add to the total number of trees and useful green space. I also share concerns about schools, libraries, recreation centers, and other community benefits, as well as improving access to transit and stormwater mitigation. The biggest part to, or the biggest point to note here, however, is this isn't really the stage for that. This, you know, the purpose of the sector plan update is they're broad overarching visions for land use and density 10, 20, 30 years from now. A sector plan is merely the first step in a multi-decade-long process of building out for new neighbors, businesses, and public facilities. There are still many dozens, hundreds of individual site plans, zoning ordinances, capital improvement projects, and transportation analyses, where the actual shape and height of buildings, placement of garages, parks, bike lanes, bus stops, and of course, public facilities are argued over and decided. All of those community benefits and features need a completed sector plan in order to get to that step. Only until there's a completed sector plan can residents, civic associations, elected leaders, developers, and others then figure all of this out. Think of it, planners need to know how many people to expect and where they're going to be in order to properly plan facilities and infrastructure. Neighbors' concerns over building heights and loss of green space particularly comes from the artistically rendered map that was included as part of the plan by county staff. As a professional communicator of 18 years, I understand the desire to create spiffy visual aids to help galvanize interest, but in this case, the illustrative map did more harm than good. But don't let that distract us from the massive good this plan will bring. It's a comprehensive and very well-done grand vision for Pentagon City's future over the next few decades, so I'm solidly in favor of the planning study updates. All items should be recommended in whole to the county board. It needs to be approved by them so that Pentagon City can grow into an even more beautiful, vibrant, and sustainable neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theo.
Our next speaker is Joe James, followed by Matt Genivan.
Hello. One moment. Hello, and thank you for hearing my comments tonight. I'm relatively new to the Pentagon and Crystal City areas, and I just want to say I love this area and I want to live here as long as I can, and that's why I'm commenting tonight in favor of the Pentagon City Sector Plan. With the population of Arlington forecast to grow indefinitely, we need to grow housing supply to meet the coming demand. Building more housing will benefit not only newcomers who moved to Arlington in the 2020s and beyond, but current tenants as well by keeping the housing supply more abundant and lowering relative housing costs. Dense housing developments are more environmentally friendly than other alternatives. When people live in dense areas, they drive less, they use energy more efficiently, and they emit less carbon per capita than alternative living arrangements. Denying dense housing hurts the environment and makes walkable communities a luxury enjoyed by the rich and not a way of life everyone should be entitled to. I urge I urge Arlington to adopt the Pentagon City Sector Plan in full and the amendments to the General Land Use Plan in full, as well as everything that the staff recommended tonight. I believe a more equitable and environmentally sustainable Pentagon City is possible, a Pentagon City that welcomes people regardless of their income, race, gender, sexuality, religion, or immigration status. The first step toward this kind of Pentagon City is adopting this plan and plans like it that will expand housing supply and increase population density. If we refuse and go back and delay housing construction or limit how much housing we can construct, we run the risk of going the opposite direction toward higher housing costs, more cars, more pedestrian deaths, more carbon pollution, and a more unequal Arlington. The decision then is clear. Please recommend the Pentagon City Sector Plan in full and the amendment to the General Land Use Plan to the county board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Our next speaker is Matt Ginnivan, followed by Mark Capistrant.
Hi, I'm Matt Ginnivan. I'm a senior vice president of development with JBG Smith. We're the property owner of River House. First off, I want to say thank you to staff and all the volunteer civic representatives who have done an amazing job over the last 18 months, really engaging with the community, property owners, and other stakeholders in crafting this plan. It has been a very well-run and extensive process. I think that the Sector Plan does an excellent job, as others have noted, of providing that overarching vision and guiding principles for future growth. This area of our community is a uniquely transit-rich and job-rich part of the community, and we're excited to invest in housing to ensure that we have balanced growth here. With the visions and the principles of the plan established, JBG, we can now begin developing our plans for River House. Like all Sector Plans, we recognize that the vision and principles that have been established in the Sector Plan are at a very high level. And we know that a lot of the site-specific details are going to need to be developed and further improved with community engagement through the site plan process. So we look forward to that further engagement with the community through the 4.1 and SBRC process as we refine those site-specific details to realize the vision of this plan and balance growth of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginnivan.
Our next speaker is Mark Capistrant, followed by Alyssa Marlowe.
Yes, hello, Mark. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Hi, this is Mark Capistrant. I am speaking on behalf of Density That Makes Sense and also as a board member at the Arlington Ridge House condo. Along with 1,600 of my neighbors and growing, there is opposition about the drastic increases in density that the Pentagon City Upzoning Plan calls for. We are taking a position for sensible development, not the radical and divisive YIMBY or NIMBY viewpoints that seem to be around us. We are asking for neighborhood manners to be respected. We have concerns about the plan in regards to rightsizing and masking of the buildings. We are asking that building heights be capped at six stories to fit into the neighborhood scale, similar to the most recent JBG Smith plans presented. We are asking that lead neighborhood rating requirements be implemented into the Pentagon Development Plan. We are asking that public and private green spaces need to be preserved, including mature trees, six tennis courts at the River House site, pools, dog parks, and other private outdoor recreation to make this a place that people would actually want to live. The River Site, the River House site has sensitive environmental concerns, and there needs to be environmental impact studies in regards to steep slope protection, similar to the requirements called out in Lead Neighborhood and also the Chesapeake Bay, you know, protection requirement. We need to protect and restore natural habitat along Arlington Ridge. There needs to be erosion prevention for Arlington Ridge, environmental impact studies also during the 30 years of proposed ongoing construction. Also, human rights issues need to be looked at, such as people's right to have natural light and the sky. We are generally happy with our community as it is. Mixed housing-type neighborhoods on a human scale are significantly more resilient and more welcoming. We feel it is helpful to know your community and live in a community for a while before you decide to change it, and that reasonable changes can be made with proper community engagement. A study should be a study, not a predetermined agenda to be implemented. This plan is divisive and sowing unhealthy divisions in Arlington County with the county property developers being pinned against residents, and that is not the Arlington way. We hope there will be more, you know, community engagement with this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Capistrant.
Our next speaker is Alyssa Marlowe, followed by David Amador.
This is Alyssa Marlowe. Can you... Oh, this is Alyssa Marlowe. I'm on the phone. Is that, is the technology working now?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So I am a certified H-SEEP and COOP planner, and I own a condo in Arlington Ridge, and I've lived in Northern Virginia about 19 years. Just for reference, I'm at about 40% to AMI, and I've never heard of any of these engagement opportunities until like the last week or two. As a planner by trade and sort of holding various certifications, there are gaps in the planning process that I would like to suggest or address before this is rushed through. The plan seems to be, people keep saying that they're rushing it for Amazon, but Amazon has confirmed that that is indeed not the case. So my questions again as a planner are, I want to know why the county staff didn't use their own planning standards that they tell businesses to use on their website. I have some links I'm happy to send. There are various planning assumptions that are left out of the document, and therefore, the word "plan" for this is not correct. It's actually a business case justification. It becomes clear to me as a planner and reading this that JBG Smith wanted to be part of this and is probably lobbying the counties to change density at their site. A plan like this isn't vague. I'd also note, who pays for it? There's, since I am a planner, again, I wrote some assumptions that the plan makes without actually listing them in the plan. It says that significant engagement of area residents took place, but everyone I talked to hasn't even heard of this until the last few weeks. The last I heard anything like this mentioned was in 2019, when the discussion about Amazon was coming, and they discussed townhouses happening in that area, which are fine, as other people have mentioned, you know, mixed housing types, that's great. It provides opportunity for other people. But I think there's a lot of assumptions that this plan makes that are clear to me that an economist hasn't looked at it, because on page four of draft three, they cite that six new buildings have already been approved, and they cite that as demand, not supply. Also, I'm aware that there are open, committable, afforded housing units open at River House, and so I question that there's actually a need. My other questions are in regards to safety. The 2017 Northern Virginia Hazard Mitigation Plan says that Arlington is already one of the most densely populated places in all of the United States, which is identified as a hazard to Arlington County. The Pentagon City Plan assumes that the new density can be supported by a fire station up until 2030. I question how this is the fact. And also, with crime already so high in the area, the police chief unable to control it and unable to staff up and add new officers, I would like to know how that's going to take place. And it's very timely, because 15 minutes ago, a police officer knocked on my door and asked to come out to my balcony to witness a crime in progress with his binoculars. So I have questions about community engagement, too. I think there's a lot of assumptions. There's an assumption that civic associations and this group I've never heard of before, called Livability 22202, actually represents the desires of current residents or that that's considered community engagement. Most people don't have time to pay attention to those things, especially during COVID, because they're educating their children via Zoom, they're fighting for unemployment benefits, they're dealing with deaths in family members, Afghanistan evacuations. This is a town that has a lot of veterans who have served and are probably dealing with all sorts of things.
Ms. Carlo, you're, Ms. Marlowe, you are, you're over time. Please wrap up your comments.
I would just, sure, I got it. Yep, I would just like to know how the, how that 22202 group that Mr. Dorsey said met barriers to information sharing with high-rise residents. And there's a lot of other groups that say they represent me, and they don't. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marlowe.
Our next speaker is David Amador, followed by Jane Green.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is David Amador. Wanted to state that I'm opposed to the development as it's currently drafted because of density concerns. This is unprecedented and excessive for an area that is currently also experiencing adverse effects as a result of the density that we're just, I think, articulated. Also, I'd like to note there's currently 200 apartments that are open and available for rent right now, either within the River House or the adjacent apartments across the street. Without degrading any of the efforts that Matt put into this, and I know he speaks very well and he's represented the plan well, the plan had serious gaps and is based on insufficient community engagement, a lack of forethought, and will overall reduce the quality of life for those residents who currently live in the area and those residents who would live in the area if they were, if the plan were to be approved. And that's based upon the current conditions and what we can expect to see. And you don't have to take my word for it. If you want to see what density looks like, look no further than Seattle and Amazon HQ1. I recently moved from there in the last three years. And what I can say is that the assumptions that underpin this plan, the propositions for increased biophilia, diversity, equity, increased livability, it doesn't pan out. You get more crime, you get overcrowded schools, you get more homelessness. Overall, it's bad for everybody. But I recognize that the plan, excuse me, that the county has to do something with that area. We do need more housing, it's true. But we need to do this in a way that makes sense for those that live in the area and those that would live in the area. Increasing the density, tripling it, as the plan currently calls for, is excessive. It's something that has to be addressed before this plan can be moved forward. Furthermore, we have to clearly articulate metrics of success. If this plan is approved in its current conditions and you disagree with what I'm saying, then at the very least, consider assessments that are phased to determine whether or not the assumptions that currently exist now are turned into facts and they become reality. Finally, or excuse me, second to last, green space categorization by affiliate, the first gentleman who spoke mentioned the fact that this will actually reduce green space and biophilia. This notion of green parkways or walkways, they all coincide with roads. If there's an increase of 25,000 people in this area, it's incorrect to assume that those roads won't be heavily utilized, even if there are fewer people driving as a percentage of those that move in. Finally, and I hate to have to say this, but I'd like to call on the board members to declare if they have any financial conflicts of interest with JBG Smith or Amazon before this plan moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Travanda.
Our next speaker is Jane Green, followed by Michael Perry.
Hello, and you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jane Green. Today, I am speaking on my own behalf. I used to live in Pentagon City, and I served as a representative on the committee for the PCSP until I moved to another neighborhood in Arlington last summer. I moved because I wanted to be closer to a neighborhood school, so I'm very excited that this plan sets in a process of getting a neighborhood school to Pentagon City. I fully support the Pentagon City Sector Plan to increase the housing supply in the area. Opponents of this plan have used my words to say otherwise, and that is being disingenuous. I support the Sector Plan because our housing need is urgent and because it will allow Pentagon City to fulfill its potential as a place for people to live and thrive. We all know that housing is urgently needed throughout our region. Residents in Pentagon City are already facing rising rents. The housing need is now. Further delay will only exacerbate the housing crisis and will put off how long we can have before solutions are available. The Pentagon City Sector Plan is the beginning of what will be an ongoing neighborhood conversation. It doesn't prescribe the building size or location, but it will allow Pentagon City to have the density it needs to become a world-class 15-minute neighborhood. And that includes bringing new amenities like schools and other neighborhood-serving retail. Pentagon City is already relatively low-density considering it's close to so many world-class pieces of transportation and new work centers. The county needs to take every step that it can to counteract the impact of Amazons coming into this hyper-local housing market. The plan also allows more opportunity for housing near metro. This will help people live car-free or car-light or reduce congestion and will support the investment that we have made in the metro system. The plan increases the housing supply on underutilized land, especially surface parking lots. It will allow more housing near jobs and other amenities such as the Virginia Highlands Park. This plan will help Arlington achieve its the goal set out in the Affordable Housing Master Plan by establishing a 10% onsite affordable threshold for new developments. And it takes a holistic approach to Pentagon City to meet the housing need, as well as needs for amenities, schools, improving walkability and bikeability, and other transportation needs. I urge a swift improvement of this, implementation of this plan so that it can help many people throughout Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And I do want to encourage that certainly if you, if any speaker doesn't feel, has any reason that they wish not to, that's fine, but I, you know, I do encourage people to turn their cameras on if they wish to do so and are so inclined. Again, thank you, Ms. Green, not picking on you in particular, and then moving along.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Perry, followed by Jenna B.
Hi, my name's Michael. I'm a resident of Pentagon City, particularly the River House community. And like one of the other speakers, I'm generally engaged in the community, but I just heard about this plan. And after reviewing it, I had some major concerns. The most important one is that I found it troubling that your plan doesn't seem to speak much about fighting its restrictive zoning laws, which is really the root cause of the problem we have in Arlington. And River House already being a large dense housing complex surrounded by affluent, detached, primarily white households. As an economist, I recognize that this plan is only going to exacerbate that problem. And in my opinion, it's going to make the community a less equitable place to live and by that same token, a less appealing place to live. I was also concerned, as I alluded, that there's minimal public awareness, and I believe that some of your campaigning may actually have contributed to the lack of awareness. I didn't see much evidence that the focus groups you conducted had many residents of zip code 22202. And also, they did include a real estate developer with JBG Smith, and one of them was even on the call. And that's, having them involved heavily in this process is not going to serve the actual residents of the community. It can only hurt our interests. And lastly, I don't believe that many residents of Pentagon City would approve this plan if they knew much about it. And while you have, you know, produced some good documentation and explained your rationale and so on, I think the real meat of the plan is hidden on like page 123 of this very large document where you actually diagram what the River House community would look like. And it just looks incredibly clumsily and lazily put together without much, you know, thought going into it, where you're just kind of jamming buildings everywhere you can find them. And there's two giant towers between the James and the Potomac Building. So while I understand this is just sort of a sketch of a plan, I don't believe this is, yep. If you want to get to where you need to be, you have to start off on the right foot. And this plan you've kind of outlined is not the right step. It's only going to lead to worse things down the line. And so I oppose the plan and think we need more community engagement and a more well-thought-out plan before we start moving forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenna B., followed by Maritza C.
Okay, I'm muted. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanna Bartalova, and thank you for giving me the floor to speak. I'm a resident and property owner at the Ridge House, and I've lived here for more than a decade. To highlight an issue that is of great importance to me. I grew up in the Soviet Union, a country where people's voices were not asked or heard. In fact, speaking on a political or social issue would be a one-way ticket to prison for a long time. So the issue of representation is of great importance to me, and I'm extremely grateful living in the United States. I first heard about this plan when Mr. Matuzik made the presentation in mid-October at our Conda Association. And at that time, I was shocked about the plan's scale, impact, and its lack of critical studies that would demonstrate that this area can truly support the tripling in population density. But more importantly, I was startled by the fact that I heard nothing about this consequential change in my neighborhood prior to his presentation. Was I an outlier? Well, let me tell you that I wasn't alone. As of tonight, there are close to 1,600 residents from the 22202 area who signed a petition online or paper voicing their stronger position to the current version of the plan. I have a doctorate degree in sociology with specialization in demographic and social analysis. And I've been working for the past 20 years with survey data. Mr. Matuzik, you showed us today a slide and mentioned the discussions with key stakeholders. So let me say it again. Close to 1,600 residents said that they did not know about the plan. They were not part of shaping this plan, and they do not support this plan as-is. So no statistical agency in the world or a respected news or research organization that surveys people for their opinion would call that number of people in the target area, not someone who lives in another part of Arlington or in another state. They would not call these people outliers. And nothing undermines good governance more than the exclusion of citizens from the key decision-making process that affects them in the most direct way. So I'm here to oppose the plan as-is and then request to defer the plan until the broad engagement and representative engagement is achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you also to the previous speaker. I apologize for not being able to acknowledge you. I briefly lost my audio connection, but your comments are appreciated.
Maritza C. is followed by Audrey Clement. Maritza, last initial C. Okay, our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by John Steele.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name is Audrey Clement. I'm from the Westover neighborhood. There's been a lot of community opposition expressed to the latest Pentagon City Sector Plan with good reason. When the plan is built out, there will be no place for foot traffic, let alone car traffic. Another concern is absorption. The Pentagon City residential vacancy rate is about 6% right now. What will it be when the density is tripled? In recent RALNOW commentary, community activist Suzanne Sundberg described the situation in Boston, which currently boasts a vacancy rate of 6.7%. She said, quote, "Not only are existing apartment complexes experiencing continued high vacancy rates, but the new Class A apartment buildings aren't getting leased up." John Shushan couldn't lease enough units in the Rixey, the Marymount site in Boston, and sold it back to Marymount in 2019. And now, Marymount cannot lease enough of the units to its students and staff. So it wants to convert apartment units to hotel units. This follows the conversion of 175 of Forest City's 405 Ballston Quarter Apartments into short-term Y hotel units. By the way, that also has occurred at a recent development in Roslyn that was developed by Pennsance. Some of this persistent vacancy problem could be attributed to the astronomical asking rents, and some could be attributed to the dumping of thousands of new units onto an already oversaturated market. And then there's the boomeranging back home of 42% of Northern Virginia's young people who cannot afford these asking rents. For now, these buildings are continuing to swing it. But at some point, the party ends. The fallout from the pandemic and the overbuilding spree may be delayed, but it won't be denied forever." End of quote, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Steele is followed by Dennis Miller.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to speak this evening. John Steele, I'm in the neighborhood that abuts the River House parking lot. And my purpose in speaking tonight, well, I'll be brief, is just to ask for balance. That whatever is done to the River House parking lot property reflect the needs of this longstanding neighborhood. Right behind me is the parking lot, beyond that, of course, the building. We ask that whatever is developed respects that buffer and not have the, whatever is developed swallow up this neighborhood and the streets along the way. So again, just please ask you for balance and a thoughtful approach that respects both the needs relative to development, but also the needs of the existing neighborhood here alongside the River House. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
I hope you can hear me.
Our next speaker is Dennis.
Hello, this is Maritza Cooper. I have been trying to get on here, and I'm having technical difficulties. And your link to do the video does not work for me. Is there any way I can speak?
You can speak now, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Okay, okay, thank you, and I apologize. My name is Maritza Cooper. Okay, I happen to live in River House. I've lived here since about August of 2020. I moved in the middle of a pandemic. I was born and raised in New York City. In New York City, where I was, we had no green space. Our parks were made of concrete. They were not fun places to play. To the people who keep saying that we have empty parking spaces here in River House, I'm sorry, but we don't. The parking lots are consistently full. Maybe during the day while people at work, they're empty, but I work overnight. I work weird hours very frequently. Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you again.
Okay, this is really bizarre. Anyway, River House is a wonderful place to live. But putting as many buildings in here that these plans show, that this map shows, is insane. 18 buildings, that's a lot of density. 3,500 apartments, that, we cannot support that. Our amenities in this area or our infrastructure cannot support that. Between the fire department, the police, the schools, that's a lot of people. A few of you keep talking about how you want it to be, you know, where people don't have to use cars. I'm sorry, I have to have a car. I work in DC, and I don't have a metro station anywhere near me. We can't live in a bubble. And it seems to be, it seems to me that quite a few people just kind of want to live in Pentagon City and be able to commute around here by bike and take metro here and there. But not everybody works where metro's available. And growing up in the city, trust me, taking the bus kind of bites. It's not a lot of fun to have to take a bus and a train to get to work or to go to school. So I do not support this plan. It doesn't work. I think that growth is not a problem, but it needs to be growth that makes sense. It needs to be growth where you've got some smaller buildings. 20-story apartment buildings don't make any sense. I grew up in a building in some projects that were 26 stories. There were five of them. This is what this place is going to look like. I moved to River House because it is a beautiful community. It is extremely well-run. The amenities are fabulous. Every time I turn around, every time I go outside to walk my dog, I see people walking their dogs, kids playing, people jogging, people riding their bikes. It's a fabulous place to live. But you guys seem to want to just get rid of all of that, get rid of the green space, remove the parking lots, which makes absolutely no sense because they are very, very, very full most of the time. And building on the parking lots, okay, those new buildings will have parking underneath, but what about the people that are using the parking now? Where are they supposed to park? So again, if I'm babbling, I apologize, but I do not support this plan the way it is right now. And we also did not get a lot of communication. First thing I heard about this was basically about three weeks ago, which is when I joined up. And to the gentleman from JBG Smith. Again, I'm a River House resident. I hope this doesn't come back to bite me later on. But this is a great place to live. Let's keep it that way. Let's make this, building this area up, let's make it work. Let's make it where it's more sustainable and it makes a little bit more sense. Thank you for listening, and I apologize for any technical difficulties.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Bye.
Our next speaker is Dennis Miller, followed by Carol Weiser.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dennis Miller, I live here in 22202, near the River House. I've been involved with plans by contractors to increase the density at the River House property for about five to six years. And I've always felt like the county planning office supported the residents here by accepting a limited increase in density with the new buildings in the north and central parts of the property mirroring buildings across Joyce Street and Pentagon Road. The county planning office had always looked at the River House property as a standalone action, and we felt like reasonable changes could be made. Now, the county planning office has acted during the pandemic to lump the River House property into the Pentagon City Sector Plan and to triple the allowed density on the property. The agenda mentions a balanced approach when only one area of the entire plan, and that's North Central River House, is proposed for high residential. Although this might be what the planning office, JBG, and its corporate partner want, a concrete jungle is not in the best quality-of-life interest of our community. I've been to South Korea and have seen apartment complexes so closely jammed together that the buildings have large numbers on them so the residents and guests can more easily make their way through the maze. Let's pause, engage, and listen to the entire community. De-link the River House from the Pentagon City Sector Plan and increase the quality of life for our local residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Weiser, followed by Kendrick Whitmore.
Thank you. My name is Carol Weiser. As a resident of this area for almost 10 years, I'm opposed to the proposal in the Pentagon City Sector Plan to modify the GLOP and specifically upzoning with respect to the River House. As a lawyer, I understand the importance of process, and I join many of the prior speakers in saying that this is something that I have been very interested in for a number of years. And yet, despite that interest, I was unable to learn about this latest proposal until quite recently. And like many of the speakers who have spoken before, do not believe that there really was true public engagement and that there has not been transparency with engagement of the affected community. What little public engagement there was was previously focused on other parts of Pentagon City and not on the River House, is my understanding. The plan provides for tripling the density in the River House area. And that is a very drastic change for the area. We need to understand what the options are, what options have been considered, and what, if anything, is sparing the need at this time. The affected community needs to have the engagement. We do not necessarily oppose a rational investment in housing, but the impact in the River House area has been minimized in the presentation. It was stated that that possibly could be limited to the parking lots. That does not seem to me to be possible. And residents of the River House themselves state that that does not seem to be feasible to them. So with that, I thank you very much, and I hope that the Planning Commission will take some additional time to study this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser.
Our next speaker is Kendrick Whitmore, followed by Davis Sa.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Kendrick Whitmore. I'm with Venable LLP. I represent Brookfield Properties, owners of the 12th Street Landing Site in Pentagon City, formerly the TSA headquarters. I want to first thank staff and the community for the incredible amount of work that has gone into this plan. And we really believe that staff's done a terrific job in coordinating the multiple stakeholders' interests into a plan that everybody can be proud of. Pentagon City's been in need of a planning overhaul for decades. The existing plan dates back to 1976. Given the age of the plan and the importance of this area as a metro corridor, it's critical to update this plan to reflect and represent modern planning principles. With so many transit opportunities in the area, which are only going to be improved by the recommendations of this plan, this is the right place for new development. In particular, the 12th Street Landing Site located atop a metro station is going to deliver an updated, well-planned environment that contributes to the urban fabric as a whole. Development on this property will also bring forward a number of community benefits that are outlined in the plan. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, single out Matt Matuzik and thank him for all his hard work on this plan and his efforts to date and as they continue. In conclusion, we ask that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the staff proposal for the Pentagon City Plan so that this metro corridor can reach its full potential. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitmore.
Our next speaker is Davis Serra, followed by Roy Wellman.
Thank you, thank you, and good evening. My name is David Sarr. I live at 1201 South 23rd Street. I've lived in this community since 1974. 48 years ago, I moved into Robert Towers, which many of you may know now as the Cavendish. I have concerns about the Pentagon City Plan, especially with respect to the greater density plan for the River House. I request that the plan be deferred for further consideration. The current configuration of the River House apartments provides open space, vistas, and blue-sky views. I am concerned that these unique benefits will be lost. Today, as you walk along Joyce Street, you can see the Air Force Memorial between the River House buildings. From the ridge, you can look down into the valley between the buildings. In walking along the street or up the stairs to the ridge, the pedestrian is not surrounded by structures. You walk in the open. All of this space and the views it permits will be wiped out by the new high-density buildings. And the beauty of the River House complex itself will be ruined. It does not appeal to me to replace these open spaces with tunnel-like green ribbon walking paths. I am also concerned that the changes would undermine the quiet dignity of the Grace Hopper Park. In the rush to meet other goals, the current benefits that are right before our eyes would be eliminated. I am also concerned that the greater density at River House and in Pentagon City generally will vastly increase the traffic in this area. Rather than optimistic assumptions of traffic patterns, we need a hard-headed, realistic assessment of a worst-case traffic scenario, which frankly is the most likely one we will have to deal with. Thank you for listening to my views. I hope this plan can be delayed to give deeper consideration of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Sarr.
Our next speaker is Roy Wellman, followed by Pamela Van Heijn.
Hello. As a Pentagon City resident since 2015, I feel that the residents most directly affected by this plan were very much left out of the entire process. It seems clear that the county and JBG had plans to make drastic changes to the River House land use at the outset of this planning study. to the River House land use at the outset of this planning study. But to my knowledge, no attempts were made to reach out directly to the residents of River House or to adjacent properties, either to inform or to solicit input. Most residents on and near River House were not even aware of the planning study until after several drafts of the recommendation had already been released. I would like to discuss one specific example of how leaving out adjacent residents created planned shortcomings. This example concerns shadows and sunlight. The latest version of the sector plan allows for a virtual wall of buildings up to 12 stories tall, parallel to Lynn Street, and right next to the largest stand of mature trees on the River House site. During the planning process, a simple and incomplete shadow study appeared briefly. This shadow study presented a few scenarios where maybe, just maybe enough sunlight could reach down into the new green ribbon and public spaces in order to support the proposed new trees and greenery. However, the same shadow study completely ignores the potential significant loss of sunlight along South Lynn Street and the western border of River House property. The result? Glove changes in this plan allow a site design that risks slowly killing all of these existing mature trees, not just at River House, but also on the property across South Lynn, which is not owned by River House. These mature trees on both sides not only provide shade and clean our air, they also act as a much-needed sound and visual buffer and provide an important ecosystem for wildlife. Looking more closely at the mentioned incomplete shadow study, it's not even clear that there will be enough sunlight to support the proposed new public space plant life. Perhaps this is why the shadow study was not included in the current version of the plan. The proposed green ribbon is enticing on paper, but without further examination of the overall density and building heights, there's risk of killing the already-existing green ribbon of mature trees only to replace it with some small trees and bushes that might not even survive. This is just one example of the many shortcomings of the plan. Like most of my neighbors, I support sensible density increases near the metro and on the River House properties, like those proposed by the developer in 2019. However, I cannot support a plan that will create acres of concrete and shadow that strain the existing life on the River House property and the adjacent areas. Looking at current vacancy rates, there's no emergency here. A few more months to actually include affected residents will allow the county to truthfully claim broad resident participation. Along with more than 1,500 residents who oppose approving the plan as is, I urge the Commission to withdraw support for the Pentagon City Planning Study until which time the county considers and addresses this and other concerns of current residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Van Heine, followed by Alice Hogan.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. I'm keeping my video off so my computer doesn't crash. Thank you, Commissioner Chair Weir and Planning Commission members and staff for your hard work on this and giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Pamela Van Heine. These are my personal comments as a pedestrian advocate and 36-year resident of Aurora Highlands. In general, I do support the plan. Tonight, I want to focus my comments on the need to include Protected Bike Facilities, PBL, along 12th Street in the PCPS. These PBL would be in addition to, not instead of, other planned PBL in Pentagon City. I support building PBL as a pedestrian safety issue. When cyclists have their own space, both pedestrians and cyclists are kept out of conflict and safe. I'm also a strong supporter and user of public transit and the Transitway. And I do not believe that adding well-designed PBL would adversely impact the Transitway buses and riders using 12th. Cyclists and pedestrians currently travel along and desire to continue to travel along 12th Street because it's flat, convenient, travels under Route 1 safely, and always will, and connects to Crystal Drive, Longridge Drive, Pentagon City Metro, and other transit on 12th and Hayes, the many retail establishments along 12th Street, and of course, HQ 2. At the recent Penn Place SPRC meeting, I presented arguments for adding Protected Bike Facilities on 12th in front of the site. You can watch the recording if you haven't seen it, and my comments start at 55 minutes. SPRC members in general supported my comments. Ms. Gabor disagreed. However, at the Transportation Commission meeting on January 27th, the Chair and Ms. Gabor had a terrific discussion on 12th Street, which I encourage you to watch. Their discussion starts at 1:03. Ms. Gabor gave a detailed analysis of why adding a PBL on 12th Street would not work. Concerns include the physical constraints about the block of 12th between Eads and Route 1 that the county policy is to, and that the county, yeah, that the county policy is to plan for continuous bike lanes rather than one with gaps. However, I strongly continue, encourage the county to add supportive language to the PCPS, stating that creating a safe and protected bike facility along 12th Street is a goal over time as land is redeveloped. The existing south side of 12th on the block between Eads and Route 1 has an oversized, poorly-developed landscaping zone that is 17 feet wide. That's plenty of room to have a bike lane. Meanwhile, as the Penn Place site, the county could recommend keeping parking puto on one side of 12th while planning for Protected Bike Facilities on the other side. Then, in the next block between Fern and Hayes, as those redevelopments go forward, you can plan something there. Having a PBL on these two blocks alone will provide a safe, convenient, and desirable connection between Metro and PBL on Southeast. Years ago, somebody said that all the easy bike plans are done, and now we have to do the hard stuff. And I think that is right, and I have to stop, and thank you very much. Please do include these in the PCPS and Penn Place site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heine.
Our next speaker is Alice Hogan, followed by Richard Reb.
Good evening. I'm Alice Hogan, speaking on behalf of the Alliance for Housing Solutions this evening. We're a nonprofit in Arlington that works on housing policy, advocacy, and public education. We wanted to speak in favor of tonight's proposed sector plan for the Pentagon City area. Since earlier guidance occurred in 1976 and again in 1997, it's clear that the Pentagon City Sector Plan is desperately needed in this rapidly-changing part of Arlington. The plan is a chance for the Arlington community at large and the local neighborhood, neighbors in particular, to articulate our collective values regarding housing, green space, transportation, biking, walking, community services, and more. We are thankful for the efforts of the Livability 22202 Coalition of Civic Associations and other groups, as well as to the county's planning staff for their extensive efforts to gather and distill from hundreds of participants the current needs and goals of the Pentagon City area. As we know, housing supply is at crisis levels throughout the county and especially in Pentagon City, where rents are rising rapidly. Pentagon City today has relatively low density, considering its adjacency to many transportation options and commercial centers, not to mention one of the world's largest corporations. The county needs to take every step it can to counteract the impact of Amazon's arrival in this hyper-local housing market. In particular, because of Amazon, Arlington's population is growing fast, and this plan includes important new expansions that will result in many new housing units on unutilized, underutilized space, especially on surface parking lots at the River House site. And a threshold of at least 10% for onsite affordable units is an important step specifically addressing affordable housing in the community. The county should further explore how these future affordable housing units could be maintained after their 30 years of affordability ends. We know that the only way to make the addition of affordable units financially feasible in a market this hot is for them to be incorporated into larger developments to access the economies of scale, where costs are shared across the density of a larger building. Most new residential density in this plan will be located on the surface parking lots scattered on the River House site. This is a prudent and more sustainable use of space to concentrate density in one section where it already exists, to preserve surrounding open space and lower-density areas in the larger area. The majority of the green space in the plan area, in the plan area, is privately-held green space. Because of the language in this plan, these scattered spaces will be secured as public green and open space, whereas today, they are privately-controlled green spaces and as such, can be developed by right at any time and be lost as open space forever. In conclusion, the proposed Pentagon City Sector Plan reflects the current and future needs of the Pentagon City area and anticipates the needs of future residents, such as capturing green space for preservation, outlining bike and pedestrian and traffic safety measurements, and planning development areas in an organized manner. All these efforts will create an even more livable neighborhood for Pentagon City's future, current and future residents of all income levels, both renters and owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Reb, followed by Alaa Kamens.
Hello. My name is Richard Reb, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Representative Condominium Association, representing 205 families on Arlington Ridge Road, directly opposite the northern portion of the River House parcel. I'm here to ask the Planning Commission to delay approving the portions of this plan that relate to the River House property, most specifically the changes to the general land use plan and zoning and others that follow from that. I could and will talk about aspects of the plan that some would agree or disagree on, but there's one point I believe we can all agree on, and that's what I'm going to talk mainly about, which relates to the Arlington Way. It's something the county believes in, and it's generally conceived that it works. Get everybody to talk, make their points, find consensus where you can, agree to disagree where you do, decisions are made, people feel they're heard, and you move forward. But the question here is, what if that engagement doesn't happen? Yes, there were people involved in this effort. Pentagon City clearly needs a relook. Is Pentagon City attractive today? Most people would say no. But why is it that way? I was surprised and asked Matt a few days ago why this process had no discussion of that. Usually, self-assessment is an important part of moving forward. What I would say is one of the issues is developers have called the shots largely on Pentagon City development, and the concerns, the people have been secondary. And in a sense, that's still happening. But there were people interested in changing Pentagon City and improving it, and so they engaged. But our community didn't, and there's no debate on that point. Question is, why did that happen? Every time a developer has come into Upzone River House, we have engaged actively with the county, most recently with Vernado, even more recently with JGB. And then that project went on hold. So we were waiting for news of what was going to happen next, but news never came. Instead, there was another Pentagon City study effort. There have been many studies in Pentagon City. Amazon is doing its work on that section of Pentagon City. But Pentagon City has always been defined as a line on South Joy Street relative to us. So, question is, were we at fault for not engaging? Such that it shouldn't matter? I would say no. First of all, there was the pandemic. The pandemic changed people's focus, focused on staying alive, as well as keeping their businesses alive, meaning civic life was not normal. So whereas normally, some people might say we should have been checking the county website to research what this new Pentagon City study covered and therefore be on notice, frankly, that's not an appropriate thing to ask, given the time of what was going on. Advertising. The county put out signs about the study. What did those signs say? They said it was a Pentagon City study. Pentagon City for 45 years has never crossed Joy Street. Originally, River House and Pentagon City were joined. That was before the first phased site development plan, which created the Pentagon City we know today. River House was separated, and it's been separated ever since. So there was no reason for us to think that a Pentagon City update was going to affect River House. Community associations, they were involved. ARCA was asked, why didn't ARCA communicate to its members what was going on? ARCA has said, because of the man, because of the pandemic, they communicate with their members via a newsletter. They stopped printing the newsletter. They only have like 100 emails of the people of the 6,000, you know, homes in the, in the ARCA area. So ARCA admits, sorry, they were not able to provide updates. So the fact is, we were not aware that this project was going on, and so our input was not received. Would it have mattered? I would say yes. We are the people closest to the area that was most impacted by this project. Yes, there are future studies of how to put in walkways and things in Pentagon City, but don't miss the fact. What's really going on here is the upzoning of River House. That is the only property where the density was increased, and we were not engaged in that process, and it would have made a difference. So we're asking the county to live up to Arlington Way, pause this process, allow there to be engagement with our community, and you'll end up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reb.
Our next speaker is Alaa Kamens.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alaa Kamens. I have lived in Arlington Ridge for 21 years, and my disabled mother also lives in the community. I have learned about the plan in October, and that shocked me into action. As an active member of the community, I was extremely surprised that something like that big was going on, and I was not aware. As a result, we mobilized, and today I'm speaking on behalf of 1,600 residents of this area. And I wanted to emphasize that it's 1,600 residents of this area, not people who are representing other areas of Arlington or even outside Arlington, or people who represent corporate interests. It was very interesting to hear Mr. Guinevan and Mr. Whitmore thanking the county staff for excellent engagement. Sadly, we cannot say the same. And I say, as a citizen, as a member of this community, we were supposed to be the ones consulted first. I hear this mentions of metro corridor, of anything that's used for our community. And it feels like the county completely forgets that we live here. Thousands of us live here. This is what we call home, and we have, have to be consulted. I would like to focus on three points today that I have heard about in many discussions I have had with people on the street, as I canvassed, with county staff, with county board members, with community leaders. So first, I would like to address, like many people on today's call, the failed community engagement. Again, just like tonight on the call, the residents of this area are repeatedly saying, we have not been heard, while people from other areas and people from corporate interests have been heard. And that's not a surprise, because the focus groups that are touted by the county staff, 12 of them, and this is a majority of engagement on this plan, have been dominated by corporate interests, just like tonight. We had a J B G Smith representative paid employee pitted against community members. The five virtual engagements were open to everyone, but completely misleading in advertising, and comments were not recorded, according to the county staff. And this is a huge site. This is 37 acres and a huge departure from the history of this area. As you've heard, 45 years of the same zoning, and it's triple density that is discussed. This level of engagement is not acceptable for, for a plan of this magnitude. We deserve better. Second, I wanted to address the point that this is just a rendering, as Mr. Theo said, artistically rendered maps. Interestingly, that the same artistically rendered maps are used for biophilia, and, and nobody calls out that. This is what I would like the community to know, that all the important community benefit plans are kicked down the road, as you've heard today, should there be an opportunity. Then it will be discussed. The park, it will be discussed later. The Virginia Highlands Park Master Plan is all later. However, the very important, important piece of what on February 12th the county has to approve of is upzoning. And this is going to be done now, the triple upzoning, and that will be forever. If you have seen zoning going down anywhere in this country, please let me know. And finally, biophilia. I'm wondering why the plan has mentioned the word biophilia or biophilic 93 times. And I know why. I'm a sustainability professional, and I live a zero-waste lifestyle. And if you do simple Google search, biophilia doesn't have any metrics. Whatever I call biophilia, you might not call that. And that's exactly what the plan is. By mentioning it 93 times, the county staff is trying to convince them that it's biophilic. It's not biophilic. And by the way, I haven't seen an endorsement of Livability 222 of this plan. At the same time, the three associations have not provided the endorsement of this plan. So with that, So with that, I would like the Planning Commission to please take into consideration of the opinions of actual residents of this, of this area, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weir, we now have two, um, commission representatives to speak. We have Steve Stockwell, and we have Stephen Dialloceo from C2E2.
Okay. I don't have a, let's go with Mr. Stock, uh, let's go with Mr. Stockwell first.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. The, I'm representing the Forestry and Natural Resources Committee. As you may know, the Forestry and Natural Resources Committee actually sent a letter in about this on December 29th of last year. And so we explained why we strongly favor this, this study and support it, really in its entirety. So I just want to amplify some of the things that we said in that letter. There are several things that are really unique about this plan, and citizens should know, and I've heard a lot of comments about the defects of the plan, but this is a unique plan in some respects, because it does incorporate biophilic references and, and biophilic planning. It, it also incorporates the public access through green ribbons. Those are novel planning concepts, and I, I think they're really salutary, and the committee really strongly endorses those concepts. One of the sort of nuances about getting the, getting it right on the green infrastructure upfront is that when you do that, it enhances the long-term sustainability of the project. And so we think that this is the kind of application of planning principles that we'd actually like to see in more plans, and we think this is a model in terms of sort of a green plan. And we, we also think there are some very specific references in this plan that are worthwhile. For example, putting in metrics about the 20% minimum for tree coverage is, is a good thing. Similarly, the metric of 10% for the non-woody areas, and is, is, is a good thing. And parenthetically, we support Mr. Methusick's sort of late language about specific, so of tree canopy on the River House property. Those two are, are good things. Those, those are concrete references, and we support those. One other thing I, I might note is that this is a pretty refined plan, in our view, and, and pretty advanced. However, one suggestion we might make is on page 107 of the plan, there are references to enhancing the tree canopy on the public spaces even more than on the private spaces. I suggest that the, the county might want to consider on, on its own property, as long as you're trying to make the public spaces even more worthwhile in terms of tree canopy, that you also consider when you're going to do that. That is, under state law, developers are given 20 years to maximize the tree canopy that they're actually talking about. Well, the county could shorten that to, say, 10 years. And so it, it might be worthwhile to put in a concrete reference to when you expect these tree canopy goals to be, to be met. And with, with that, I close. We, we support the plan. We think it's worthwhile. We think it'll deliver green benefits for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stockwell.
Do we have Stephen on the line? For C2E2? Okay. Well, maybe he'll speak later. So that would wrap up our list of speakers.
Was that, was that, I'm, I'm from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, actually. Is that for me, or was that a different Steve?
Uh, no, Mr. Marku, that was for someone else.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Madam Clerk, have you confirmed Mr. Marku's?
I have not confirmed Mr. Marku's receipt of his speaker slip, so it's your call.
Well, uh, yeah, Mr. Marku, we take you at your word that you submitted it and got the confirmation, and so I believe that it would be five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I very much appreciate that. My name is Stephen Marku, and I'm the new Government Affairs Director for the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. And we support the Pentagon City Sector Plan, because we feel it's an important step towards growing a new downtown for Arlington around the National Landing Area, and creating a new vision for how an urban center such as Pentagon City should be developed. With Amazon HB2 on the way, we really should be doing everything we can to get as many of these new workers to live in this neighborhood as possible. And the transformational process that this sector plan offers is needed in order to help Arlington make that happen and better address the county's housing crisis. This plan has gone through an extensive collaborative process with a great deal of public engagement involving staff, community, and stakeholders. And after all the time and money that the county has spent on developing the sector plan, and all the public engagement that has been done, we don't think it would be helpful to delay the plan's adoption any further, and we urge you to take this opportunity to recommend approval of the Pentagon City Sector Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. Ms., Madam Clerk, I noticed that there was a hand raised from Susan English, and then I noticed that another individual came on. Do we have our, our CCWU representative on now?
Um, Mrs. English signed up to speak earlier, I believe, and I see I've inadvertently left her name off the list, so if we could let her speak. And C2E2 has not come on the line.
We also have a hand up from Jeffrey Williams, but Ms. English, please, if you're still on, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As a 40-year resident of Arlington Ridge, an ARCA representative to the CCCRC, and a co-chair of the Livability Housing Working Group, I'm speaking in support of the Pentagon City Plan. I'm speaking for myself. Arlington, like the rest of our region, does have a huge housing shortage, a result of 25-plus years of looking the other way on land use and zoning policies. Our workforce, from teachers, police, healthcare, and daycare, to many other essential workers, have little choice but to live in distant suburbs and commute, a car-dependent sprawl pattern which contradicts our climate change goals. Land near Metro DC and Amazon's developing HQ2, and specifically the River House property, offers a unique opportunity to support badly-needed new housing supply, including commitment to 10% affordable units proposed in this plan. Increasing supply in a transit-rich area helps to take pressure off existing older housing, where rising costs and property taxes are already causing increasing displacement in our local housing market. I attended all five planning study workshops, as well as office hours, and submitted comments. Recent plan updates to support better development review processes and more community outreach are appreciated, but the county must work towards better integrating those living in high-rise and affordable housing into the community, so their voices can be heard. As proposed, the plan will leave some, uh, the, the plan still leaves some other concerning aspects to address, specifically performance measures and monitoring for a pretty aggressive transportation shift to non-car modes and somewhat limited open and green space opportunities. It speaks strongly of biophilia and green ways for essential connectivity, which is very welcome. But as with many long-term projects, resources to develop those will depend heavily on market opportunities. It includes projection data for school seats, hooray, but remains vague about a future school and other facilities, community center and library adequate to support the planned growth in residents and workers. Notwithstanding these concerns, I strongly support passing this sector plan, including the River House property and its planned density, and will continue working to make it better. To delay or defer it now will hurt many in need of housing and ultimately help no one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. English.
Okay.
Unless, Madam Clerk, unless we have gotten the, the representative from C2E2 with us now, I, I think that I want to, and this is my first time doing a substantive hearing, so please correct me if I'm out of line, but I think I want to go to Ms., former Planning Commission Member Jane Siegel, to present the, what is effectively the committee report, but, but a special presentation in lieu of a committee report. And if there are other committee reports, I'll, I'll entertain those after.
Mr. Chair, do you want to hear from Transportation first?
Um, I was, uh, for some reason, I remember when, when, uh, for some reason, I remember when I was the Transportation Commission Chair, someone decided that that was going to be how we kicked off commission discussion. So I, I had decide, I had thought that I would do that, but you know, it probably would be, um, uh, uh, let's, um, why don't, why don't you go, why don't you go first? Commissioner Lattome, and then we'll come back to, to Ms. Siegel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this was heard at last Thursday's Transportation Commission meeting on the 27th. There was, of course, discussion on this, just quick highlights on it. We did go into the 15th Street and the changes that were made to the plan in response to a motion from an earlier Transportation Commission meeting, where the protected bike lanes now will be aspirational through the entire 15th, all of 15th Street. We also had a long discussion, as Ms. Van Hind has referred to, on 12th Street, and why there is not a proposal for protected bike lanes along that. I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Gabor from DES gave a very long, well-done explanation of the various concerns and priorities along that corridor, and why, given all the many transportation needs there, not least of which the transitway, which is going through there, as well as the concerns about pickup and drop-off along there, the need for sidewalks, pedestrianways, that is why a protected bike lane is not being indicated for that, for that corridor in this plan. We also did discuss the realigned Joy Street and the need for some sort of, not necessarily on Joy Street, but some sort of a bicycle-friendly passage along there, in some form or another, connecting the commercial areas of Joy Street to the Aurora Highlands neighborhood. Again, it's some sort of bicycle-friendly way, or, or comfortable bicycle route along there, to be left to the, the future planning as to what would be most suitable along that. A motion was made by the Transportation Commission and passed unanimously for that, and I will be raising before, before the Planning Commission, a similar motion when that time comes later this evening. Meanwhile, the Transportation Commission voted unanimously and enthusiastically to support this plan, subject to that, those minor tweaks. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lattome. I'm, I'm a Siegel.
Uh, good evening, Chairman Weir and members of the commission. I will make a very brief introductory remark to share with the wider audience the kinds of things that we will be talking about tonight. First point is, as you will remember, we, when we did the RTA request to advertise, we talked a little bit more in depth about the various planning, uh, development goals of equity, place for people, place for, uh, environment, sustainability, and things like that. The kind of general aspirational and, uh, the aspirational part of the plan, and the way those aspirations would be nailed down in terms of urban design. Tonight, I didn't want to go back through that, although, of course, you can refer to our discussion there and those items in the plan. Staff has been, I think, very busy responding to an array of comments, many, many comments that have come in. You see them in the comment ma- matrix. And so the, I'm suggesting that the discussion tonight proceed from the comments that have come in on the plan that we reviewed during the RTA. The chairman will read out the questions, which I think you all have a copy of. In my report to you, I summarize the comments and responses from staff to all the comments that came in, and please do feel free to, uh, to, to take, to look back at those responses, which made some meaningful change in the plan. I would just say, the questions that I proposed to you, and I'm just going to read the first one and leave the agenda reading to the chair. Do planning commissioners think the plan has appropriately prescribed and developed the public realm in the PCSP to accommodate the expected density? It's, it's those kinds of questions that you can talk about, the parks, the green ribbons, the sidewalks, the roads. That's kind of what I, how I thought we should structure the discussion. I just wanted to add one factual point. The community workshops were attended, there were five or six of them, I believe, by between 60 and 80 participants throughout the, the formal part of the planning process, 60 to 80. I, I'm not, I'm not gainsaying or characterizing the several comments we heard from the members of the community tonight in public comment, but just to have a balanced discussion about the outreach and who participated, we really did have some pretty good participation. So I just wanted to put that on the table for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. I am going to go through, just and read quickly, the questions that were discussed. I got a, a question from, from one or two people about whether I intend to use the round-robin method going forward for discussion. Very quickly, I do, I do not. I am using it tonight because I anticipated that we'll be roughly in the situation we're at, which is, it's 9:07, and we're just beginning discussion of our first item for the evening. And so briefly, the topics of discussion are, do planner, do planning commissioners, one, do planning commissioners think that the plan has appropriately, and actually let me share this screen as I, as I read through it? Uh, do planning commissioners think that the plan has appropriately described and developed the public realm in the PC, in the Pentagon City Sector Plan to accommodate expected density? And I should also say, let me back up, you know, one of the signposting that we often give is to just to note that the discussion is now before the commission. And so the areas for discussion that we'll be looking at for proposal, are proposed from, from Ms. Siegel. The second one is, is the list of community benefits sufficient to properly incentivize appropriate redevelopment? Does the Pentagon City Plan advance Arlington's commitment to equity? Will inclusion of the new suggestion that now included in the plan for a PDSP process for larger sites help the commission to keep track of district-wide community benefits? Are the criteria on the plan sufficient and clear enough to encourage expanded planted vegetation on private spaces, additional tree canopy and biophilic treatment? Do changes to the transportation network meet the needs for a workable, walkable Arlington downtown? Does the new language on page six referencing the National Landing add the needed language to provide the geographical context requested by the Planning Commission? Does the plan support a robust approach to sustainability, energy efficiency, and climate, and other topics as suggested? And before I, I open up the floor, I also just want to thank the staff and all the public commentators, the commissioners who are here, and especially Commissioner Lattome, and, until very recently, former Commissioner Siegel, for their until very recently, former Commissioner Segal, for their excellent work on this, on this project. So the first thing I want to do to my fellow commissioners is ask whether there are any topics that either need to be added or that we can dispense with. And once we've settled on our plan, I am going to do a round-robin-style discussion on each item, I'm going to call on each commissioner once, and then go through a second time. And I really try, really want to encourage us to be as thorough as we can while also being as brief as we can, because we're running out of time. So thoughts on the order? And in this one, I, I just want to go popcorn for this one, and then we'll start doing round-robin, once we actually get started on, on this first topic. Commissioner Bagley.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Before we start with this, just very briefly, having heard a number of people that, or a number of comments tonight regarding River House and whether they were adequately informed, not informed, can, can we just, I know that staff at the beginning of this did go through the public engagement. Were the signs, somebody had said the signs were Pentagon City Plan, perhaps some people did not think River House was involved. Can we just go back for one second, since it was brought up before we started into this, so that we get a, from staff, what that outreach was? Thank you.
Commissioner Bagley, I think I want to take that as an additional topic, which I'm going to add
I appreciate.
Down here. Are there any other topics that people would like to add for our discussion?
Commissioner Steinberger here. I would actually move to remove the National Landing bid discussion. I don't necessarily feel like that's something that really needs topic time.
That's this one right here?
Yeah.
Unless anyone objects, before I offer that, Commissioner Segal, is there any, do you, do you have any pressing?
The only reason I raised that-
Would you be comfortable with that?
Well, two things, the only reason I raised it was that it was a motion by the Planning Commission that was accepted, and the plan was changed as a result. It is important because the plan not only gives you development guidelines for Pentagon City, but how to connect Pentagon City to the larger area, to Crystal City on the east and on the, on the west as well, to the Arken neighborhood, which was an issue under discussion, I thought, all the way through. The other thing is, I don't know, with all due respect, I don't know why we need to, if nobody wants to talk about it, that's great. But if there is a commissioner that does want to talk about it, maybe, you know, let it be there. But it's up to you, Chair.
I think what I want to do is, when we come to it, I'm going to leave it on our list, and when we get to it, encourage people to remember that silence is a scent, and we will handle it that way. Any others before we go to number one? And Commissioner Bagley, your hand is still raised, that maybe that's vestigial. But if there are no other comments, I am going to go to this first topic. Do planning commissioners think that the plan has appropriately prescribed and developed the public realm in the PCSP to accommodate expected density? Commissioner Bagley, before I call on you, I'm going to encourage people, as noted, y'all have this, so I'm going to actually stop sharing. If you, you know, this, this list is the lettered items in, in Ms. Segal's report. So if people want to follow along, I would encourage you to look there. Commissioner Bagley, on the first topic, do they think that the plan is appropriately prescribed?
I think at the moment, I'm going to pass on this one. Thank you.
Okay, and that then brings us to Commissioner Giren.
I do think that this does a good job. My only concern is what I raised in the beginning, that we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to evaluate how well the plan is doing, because we've seen our population shift over time. But yes, I think this, this does do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Hughes. Thank you, Commissioner Lattome.
Yes, I think it very much does fulfill that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton.
Thank you. I concur with Commissioners Giren and Len Tellme. Sorry, I'm adjusting my computer. One thing I wanted to point out that I appreciate that contributes to this is some of the design guidelines, which I think have a nice balance between being very specific and also allowing flexibility and that directly tie to some of the other interrelated aspects like sustainability and biophilia. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. Commissioner Patel, I believe Commissioner Patel is not with us tonight. Is that correct, Madam? Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. Commissioner Patel or Commissioner Steinberger?
Didn't we just hear from, we just heard from Commissioner Steinberger?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, thank you, Sarah. My apologies.
No problem.
Commissioner Peterson.
I agree with my fellow commissioners that the plan does plan well for expected density. I appreciate the, the efforts to improve, increase the amount of housing that'll be available, which would hopefully result in more affordable housing. And I also like the green lip, green ribbons to increase the amount of greenery in new residents and current residents' lives. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Sarley.
Can't get the sound?
Yes.
Back on, but, yeah, it closed me out of the meeting, my close, I couldn't get the meeting.
For those who are not speaking, please keep yourselves on mute, Commissioner Sarley.
Yes, I fully support the, the, the density analysis on this document, and I think I will echo my fellow commissioners.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would concur with my colleagues, and I would also thank staff for the amendments to the bike lanes, particularly along 15th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I concur with the fellow commissioners that the plan does appropriately prescribe and develop, development of the public realm with regards to public spaces and other considerations. And I appreciate the time and attention that went into the revisions made by county staff between the request to advertise and tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. I will concur with what other commissioners have, have said. Unless there are any commissioners who want to be recognized a second time on this topic, I'm going to proceed to the second topic, which is whether the list of community benefits is sufficient to properly incentivize appropriate redevelopment. And by that, we mean livable, walkable, equitable, and sustainable. And Commissioner Bagley, again, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Well, I think the spirit and the intent of it is there, as we have sometimes seen in other redevelopments around the county. Sometimes they come in as luxury things, and I just often wonder if we're really asking enough for affordable housing and things, when, you know, some of the speakers alluded to, you know, they, they wanted other spaces where they could afford to be, but a lot of what we have seen that has come in has been luxury living, and which is not, you know, for everybody. A lot of people can't do that. So, and I'm not sure how we solve that, but it is something that is, you know, as I look at that, as affordable housing, you know, we want people of all kinds and all incomes to be able to live here. And while the intent is there, I'm not sure that we ever get to the point where we actually actualize it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Commissioner Giren. Commissioner Giren, you're on mute.
My apologies, Mr. Chair. I want to align myself with-
We're all going to be the first one sometime.
I want to align myself with Commissioner Bagley's comments. I think that's a great point. I do think that the plan does a good job of that, and it might even be helpful to hear from Mr. Matuzik as a reminder of how this will work with subsequent site plans that might come forward to further refine all of this, if, if that's the area that's, if, if that would be helpful to hear that. But I think overall, the plan does a very good job of identifying what we're looking for in terms of going forward with higher density.
I am going to go through the rest of the commissions, commissioners, and then I will kick that question to you, and then invite any commissioners who want to respond to it, to do that as, as the usual second thing. So Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. I, I just want to again reiterate my comments from our advertisement. I do find the lack of, of a site proposed for an elementary school besides the already provided county facilities to be lacking. And I also don't know that this plan will have the same legacy as its first predecessor, in which the legacy is Virginia Highlands Park. It wasn't just expanded, it is Virginia Highlands Park, is the legacy of the first PDSP. And I don't know if this plan itself will have such a legacy. I intend to support it, but I just believe that we could have done a better job achieving a grander legacy for our future generations.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Lattome.
I think that the, the plan will meet that, will meet this. I'm not concerned. I think there's enough flexibility in it, and there'll be enough time for input as projects are, are in the pipeline, that these can all be appropriately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry for jumping the gun alphabetically. I, I think maybe this is what Commissioner Giren had been alluding to. I do wonder whether, to answer the question about whether something's sufficiently incentivized, particularly something like equity, I know that there are some steps outlined in terms of how we're monitoring this, but, you know, I think that that's, I'll just make the general observation that that's an important thing to consider if we're trying to answer this question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Morton. Commissioner Peterson.
I think this plan does a pretty good job with community benefits. I would only add the caveat, and I don't think we can do anything with this plan, but something to keep in mind for the future, but when looking at what we're asking for, for affordable housing, a lot of times, what is brought to us with a project is studios and one-bedroom apartments, and that often overlooks families that may need affordable housing. So if there was a way to incentivize larger units of affordable housing as well, I've spoken to Mr. Matuzik about this, and I would just love to be able to see more families who need affordable housing be able to stay in Arlington as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to associate myself with Commissioner Hughes' comments. I think the walkable elementary schools is a huge sort of ingredient for good urban development and good urban design, so I, I find that slightly, you know, important and something that we ought to put a little emphasis on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. Commissioner Schroll.
Pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Steinberger.
Hi, yes, thank you. I find the benefits as discussed in the plan and as kind of outlined to meet the expectations of what community benefits are essential and will be looked for in this community. And I, I think that in the broad scope, they, they meet the mail on that. I, I do think that there are, that the path to achievement of those and sort of the long game, the, the long-term impact of that, and this aligns somewhat with Commissioner Bagley's comments as well, I, I think there needs to be a better job assessing that and sort of a reasonable expectation of sort of when and how these things are actually delivered to the community that is understandably going through a lot of change, some of it anticipated, and, you know, sort of normal growth and development, and then some expedited by something like Amazon. And I think we need to be reflective of that. I would also like to explicitly align myself with Commissioner Peterson's comments with regards to affordable units appropriate for families. I think that's really something important, something we've discussed before, and something that, you know, I'd like to see us do a better job of addressing and incentivizing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Mr. Matuzik, I want to give you an opportunity to address Commissioner Giren's question, and then proceed from there.
There was a lot to unpack and all great comments. I'll start with perhaps the last one, going backwards. The sector plan does mention our preference and continued effort to pursue larger units with respect to the on-site affordability. It is not a hard requirement, but similarly to how I think our Affordable Housing NASTA Plan and other documents speak to how we want to make sure that various sizes are delivered, not just the efficiencies in one bedrooms, that is in the plan, in terms of a specific incentive, I think nobody's quite figured out exactly how to, you know, solve for that, because it always comes down to a value predicament. And you could probably require it, but it's going to yield less units, because it's always going to be an overall value estimate. And I think in this case, what we were trying to do is continue to regulate and enforce the amount of units, and the 10% that's in the plan is a minimum. We realize that on some sites and on some phases, there may be additional residual value that the public improvements perhaps, or the sustainability has not completely eaten up, if you will, and may be able to get more than 10%. And I think in those opportunities, even, even within the 10%, I think we are going to be very, you know, targeted in our approach for those larger sizes, and make sure there's a, you know, a variation in the unit mix. The other piece in terms of, I think the legacy that I've heard, that's completely true. This plan will have a very different legacy. I think we can speak to more or less what the scale of that might be, but I think as I look at just the aerial photography of what the area looked like from the 1970s, the economics that were at play, I think the potential to set aside as many acres as the plan did, when none of these sites were redeveloped, I think was very different than where we find ourselves today, where only a few instances, I think, have infill opportunities, and even then, I think, quite challenging ones, given the tree canopy and phasing that's going to be required maintaining parking for existing and future residents. Many of the sites within the study area actually have a much harder path to move forward, because significant structures that are going to slowly become outdated and not occupiable are going to need to be removed before new structures can replace them. And that's a significant cost when you get to that second and third generation of development, anywhere really, but especially here. So considering the economics of that and the path that these projects would have ahead of them, what we try to do is really learn some examples from other, other parts of the county with respect to what happens when site plans come forward, especially in, in a pace that perhaps is much faster than our capital improvement plan. And in those instances, what we try to do is make sure that the sites that we believe are going to happen in near term, even midterm, would have to deliver a lot of those public improvements at the same time, so that we're not playing catch-up with the funding mechanism that we control and need to prioritize for the entire county, not just this area. And instead, developers are paying for the design work, the development and construction, and then ultimately the maintenance, while we maintain a public access easement. So that was strategically identified as a priority, so the community, not just those sites, could benefit from those improvements right away, in addition to the sustainability and affordability I mentioned. With respect to midterm and long-term projects, where we have less and less information available to us in terms of how they're going to come in, in what order, and what they may trigger in that review, we're maintaining a little bit more flexibility, much more akin to what you may see now, where you won't really know what the priority is until that site is actually proposed for redevelopment. That may be 15 years from now, and a slew of very different priorities may present themselves, and we actually want to maintain that flexibility at that time to actually address them. And we actually want to maintain that flexibility at that time to actually address them. So there actually is a benefit to not spelling everything out for the next 30 years because we only know how much we know today. So I think that's the balancing act that we have with respect to community benefits that are prescribed in this plan. And hopefully, I think we'll get a quick chance to assess those. And I think somebody else mentioned the phased development site plan language that was introduced recently to the sector plan. And that's really targeted to track over time as staff begins to turn over, the community turns over, commission members may leave. How do we keep track of what's being delivered over a 15, 20-year period as large sites like Fashion Center or River House begin to redevelop? How do we keep them, you know, ensuring that they keep true to the sentiment of the plan? And they are not, I think, beginning to redevelop without giving us what we were anticipating in return.
Thank you, Mr. Matuzik. Are there any commissioners who would like to make any brief comments in response to the feedback from Mr. Matuzik? I see Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Matuzik for his last comment there where, you know, I've been in some of these studies in the past where we do the GLUP and, you know, years later, a developer comes in and sort of fighting what was developed in the GLUP. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, everyone's trying to, once this is done, assuming it is, that, you know, we can keep to it despite the fact that there might be many years, many changeovers in staff, planning commissioners, other commissioners, you know, otherwise what was the purpose? So thank you.
Unless there's anyone else who would like to follow up to Mr. Matuzik's answers or comments, I'm going to go to topic three. Does the Pentagon City Plan advance Arlington's commitment to equity? And Commissioner Bagley, back to you.
Does it? Yes. Will it? To be determined. You know, in the past, we haven't had a guiding principle like this. We do now. So not to say that that wasn't something that people were concerned about and/or sensitive to, but we have more specific guidance on this now. So does it? Yes. Will it? To be determined.
Thank you. Very interesting approach to the question. That had not occurred to me. Commissioner Gierin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to, I agree with Commissioner Bagley. And again, I feel like there's, we've talked about this. I think the plan does a nice job outlining why this is important and why it should be considered and why this plan is a really great place to start this. But the references to SPRC, and that's great, that's where this should happen. I'm just, I guess I'd like a little bit more explanation for exactly how that will happen at SPRC. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gierin. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to second Commissioner Bagley. She said it about as good as anyone. I also want to continue to thank staff for the inclusion of the Army-Navy Country Club Connector Trail inside of this planning document and its ability to connect a major employment center at the Pentagon City area to a major housing area, which is 1/4 of our county in 22204. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Leto Me.
Yes, the plan clearly, as mentioned, does have equity as one of its key components. And I think Commissioner Bagley is right. We don't know how that will play out. The intent certainly is there that this will be an equitable area, more so than it is now. A number of elements are in here that we believe will further that, and time will tell. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leto Me. Going to go to Commissioner Morton.
Thank you, Chair Weir. Echo comments of my colleagues. I appreciate the level of detail outlined in this plan with respect to trying to account for equity. I would love to see this plan as a showcase for analyzing equity in a really defensible way. And I would encourage, you know, the subject of scientifically rigorous surveys has been raised this evening. I think this is a great opportunity to go beyond us discussing SPRC and have some professional surveys, including an anthropologist or sociologist to try to tease out these questions like broad awareness of opportunity, equitable access, safe and inviting. We may think that means one thing, but I think to really get a defensible strategy, we need to get some professionals and maybe broaden the range of disciplines that we typically use and the typical kind of stakeholder engagement that we use. Thank you.
Mr. Matuzik, that's one that I'm going to come back to you on, just for staff's initial reaction because Commissioner Morton, I may ask you to consider putting that into the form of a recommendation motion. You don't have to take me up on that because it's your comment, but then I'll go to Commissioner Peterson. Now I will go to Commissioner Peterson.
I agree with my colleagues that this plan does a great job setting some goals for equity. And I also agree with my colleagues that we're going to have to see how it all plays out. I hope we can be flexible if we are finding that our goals are not being met with equity. And like Commissioner Bagley and Commissioner Morton just mentioned, you know, having robust ways to measure if we are achieving our goals and then being able to be flexible to find new ways to meet them if our established methods aren't working. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Sarley.
I'm just going to echo what everyone has been saying. I look forward to seeing how this evolves. And I think it's a really exciting development in our sort of planning processes.
Commissioner Sarley, Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to echo my colleagues specifically, Commissioner Bagley's remarks and also Commissioner Morton's about measurement and metrics and Commissioner Peterson's comments in response to an earlier question about the need to have family-sized units. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Steinberger.
Hi, yes, I'll align myself with the comments previously made and particularly eloquently by Commissioners Bagley and Morton. I think that, yes, I think that everything that is said in the plan and, you know, emphasize the importance of equity and is something that we, you know, have set as a defining principle appropriately. How that plays out and our ability to, review is not quite the right word, but to assess progress and the ability to meet those goals is something we need to be able to track and have metrics for and reassess. But I'm optimistic that we've laid out a vision by which we can hopefully achieve. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matuzik, can I ask you to speak briefly on Commissioner Morton's question about bringing in multi, you know, a sort of a multidisciplinary approach to metrics and evaluation before we move on to the next topic?
Well, I mean, first, I think it's important to highlight that this is going to be an evolving issue that is addressed in, you know, staff reports throughout the county moving forward, major planning efforts like this one and other policy documents that might come in front of you or certainly before the county board. As being one of the, let's just say, early adopters of how equity is interpreted, defined, and established as a element for reviewing and monitoring moving forward, I think the plan does a great job of at least explaining what we mean by that word. I think we found through our process that was automatically an incredible benefit to many people who, other than affordable housing, I think, did not quite really get past the other ways in which equity could be addressed or the need to continue to return as development begins to happen and change happens to monitor where we are in relationship to this point in time. So the sector plan tries to use the dashboards that we made available, not just to kind of present a snapshot in time when the plan's being adopted, but also highlight, you know, as projects come in, you know, the way equity can be addressed is through making sure that everybody has access to the amenities that are going to arrive in Pentagon City. And this kind of really led to the emphasis on public infrastructure, public spaces, making sure everyone has access, the connectivity is there, not just onsite affordability, but making sure that you don't need a car to enjoy the space, whether you're a worker, resident, or visitor. And it goes, I think, at length to describing the different ways in which the plan tries to achieve this. I think moving forward, I suspect that this plan and others will be informed by the broader analysis that's happening at a countywide level. So there may be very well, you know, timely amendments to something like this as I think additional guidance is prepared countywide. So we just happen to be first in line, if you will. So I wouldn't be surprised if further changes come in that might allude to further analysis, whether it's with third-party consultants or additional, you know, researchers or is conducted in-house. That's certainly being looked at by other folks beyond myself. I will say though, with respect to the SPRC process, one of the pieces that the sector plan tries to continue to message is really the, you know, racial equity lens and how site plans moving forward will be expected to demonstrate. And this can happen in multiple ways. I don't think we can really just program or present a simple checklist. This may evolve and should remain flexible. But, you know, forcing applicants to at least consider ways in which they have addressed equity. And I think without even asking that question, we can't really expect them to apply that filter to their proposal, particularly given their location and the timing of the application as well, which will have a lot to do with it.
There's, I think that the idea of checklists through the processes is something that, you know, certainly the medical field and surgical field has understood for a long time and other disciplines are starting to realize that it actually does add a lot of value to respond to one of the many things that you added there. Are there, Commissioner Gierin, your hand is up and I want to entertain, I want to ask anyone else who wants to respond to Mr. Matuzik to chime in before we move along.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Matuzik. That's very helpful. I guess I'm still struggling with how we operationalize this at the SPRC level, but your answer made it clear that you're thinking about that as well. It is one thing to have a discussion about this at the SPRC level, but whenever we introduce something that's a bit new, it can be hard to make clear that we're all using the same terms to mean the same thing. As my colleagues noted, it's hard to know if we've achieved success. And I hope that as this goes forward, and clearly we're all very much in support of this, that we can get a lot of assistance from you, maybe from the county's equity officer, to understand how we actually do this effectively at the SPRC level. So it isn't just another agenda item, but that we're actually doing this in a way that's productive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gierin. Anyone else want to respond to Mr. Matuzik? Then we're going to go on to, we're going to go to number four. Will the inclusion of the new suggestion now included in the plan for a PDSP process for larger sites help the commission to keep track of district-wide community benefits? Again, Commissioner Bagley, I'll be picking on you first.
Thank you, Chair Weir. Well, I think the answer is yes to both of those, but a lot of that, you know, again rests on us and, you know, how we, you know, proceed with all of this again. But I would say for me, both of the answers would be yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Commissioner Gierin.
I concur. I think the answer is yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. We'll go to Commissioner Leto Me. Commissioner Hughes, let me know if you want us to come back to you.
Yeah, I think this is a great innovation that will, in fact, do what it's intended to do. So, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you. It seems like a great idea and something that should contribute a lot. And hopefully, we can use something like this in some other areas since it seems like a valuable idea.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Peterson.
I agree with my colleagues, so I'll just pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sarley.
I'm in agreement also.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Hughes, are you back with us?
I am, Commissioner.
Not that you left, but these things can mess up. Yeah.
I'm going to skip as well, but I ask that I be skipped on the next items in the interest of time and the future upcoming agenda items. And I would see correct condition if I have anything else to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Schroll.
Yeah, we concur with my colleagues. This is a good addition and I appreciate staff adding it to the plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger.
Concur and pass.
Thank you. We'll go on to number five. Our criteria on the plan sufficient to clear through enough to encourage expanded plant vegetation, et cetera. Commissioner Bagley.
Yes, that would be yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Gierin.
Yes, and as someone who helped bring the biophilic concept along, just going to take a moment and say yes. Very grateful to staff for taking this, taking the concept and letting us explore with the community, hands-on, with the walking tour and sharing this over and over. I think they did a great job including this into the plan. This came out of an earlier plan, Public Spaces Master Plan, as something that we needed to explore. The community in 22202 was very receptive to this as part of their ongoing call for more green space. To clarify, biophilia is connecting people with nature. So some of the comments that we hear about always needing pollinator plants, that's not biophilia. That's native planting or butterfly gardening. Biophilia is about connecting people with nature. We've got a lot of people living in a densely populated area and we know they get benefits from regular access to nature. So I think the plan does a really great job encouraging native plantings. Sometimes we won't have native planting. Sometimes our street trees, a lot of our a lot of love and use. So sometimes they're not natives, but they're certainly not invasive. And I like that there's a lot of visuals, that there's appendices, that there's diagrams explaining what we're looking for here. And of course, we always do encourage native planting, seasonal plantings, things that will support our local flora and fauna. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gierin. Commissioner Hughes, taking you at your suggestion. Commissioner Leto Me.
Yes, the open space, the green features are, will be, we believe, the signature feature of this entire area. And it certainly meets the, meets what this question is. So I think it works, it supports it, and this will define it. So, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you. I concur and have nothing to add.
Thank you. Peterson. Commissioner Peterson.
Concur. Commissioner Gierin and Commissioner Landtomey said it perfectly. So I align myself with them and otherwise pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley.
Yes, I support this very much and I agree with my colleagues.
Commissioner Schroll.
I concur with my colleagues and pass.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Concur. I appreciate the explanation staff gave for the alignment with the Public Spaces Master Plan and the definitions used for open space and how we should appreciate that concept. And I do think the plan will do that, what it's supposed to.
Thank you. For the transportation network item, I'm going to take Commissioner Hughes up on his implicit suggestion that I'll just do a popcorn round robin. If you have anything that you want to be heard on, please raise your hand. I'll make sure that everyone goes once and then if I don't see anyone's hands, we'll move along. So starting with Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. This is where I have a little bit of pause with 12th Street and the protected bike lanes. I am interested to hear more from Commissioner Landtomey about the Transportation Commission's approval of the plan with an amendment related, I think, to 12th Street and protected bike lanes. So I just am looking forward to more from him when we get to that point in the meeting.
All right. Commissioner Leto Me, if you want to respond or we can go to the next person who has anything to add.
Yeah, why don't we just go through everybody first?
Okay. I don't know that there is anybody else, so I'm going to go to you.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I might actually end up referring to Mr. Matuzik on this. But when we did look at the transportation for 12th Street, and actually Ms. Gabor is here, it might even be best to have it come straight from her rather than me playing telephone. She did a great job of going through all the considerations and maybe that can be done in a more succinct way because it was quite a lengthy discussion that is available now on tape. But again, first, the transitway is locked in. It is there. It is going to be the primary, the primary design element for 12th Street for transportation. You know, that ends up causing problems with a separate bike lane in that- You know, that ends up causing problems with a separate bike lane in that we still want to have a parking area along there partly because the way it interacts with the pickup and drop-off. And before I totally muddle this, again, I'd like to turn it over to see if Ms. Gabor is available.
Before Ms. Gabor, before we, well, okay, yes, Ms. Gabor, please go ahead. If you're, yeah.
If you're available.
I can wait if you would like me to.
Well, you know, your, I, I heard your comments at the pin place and, and they were, I think, pretty definitive. My thinking is that in the interest of time, unless Commissioner Peterson would like to hear further from you, that, that, you know, I, I know, we all, we all know who the players are in this. Commissioner Landtelleme, Commissioner Slatt, the Chair of the Transportation Commission, and if they're satisfied with a built environment that doesn't include protected bike lanes, then something mighty persuasive has to have come to them. So that's, that's where I'm at. I don't want to, you know, Commissioner Peterson, I'm certainly not requiring you to feel the same way, but if you want to hear further from Commissioner, from Ms. Gabor, please.
No, I actually wanted to hear, I thought Commissioner Landtelleme had said earlier in the meeting that TC had approved the plan with an amendment and that you were possibly similar amendment our meeting, and I wanted to know what the amendment was.
Yes, I can read it to you.
I apologize, Commissioner.
It's really, it does not apply to 12th Street. It applies to the new realigned Joy Street. And what I will be moving is to have, to recommend that the staff would denote as staff sees fit within the Pentagon City Sector Plan, the need for a low-stress bike connection between the commercial portion of Joy Street that runs past Pentagon Row, now called West Post, and the residential portion of Joy Street in Aurora Highlands. Simple as that.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's more of a definitional thing to, to, which the current map inside of the, the plan is ambiguous. It doesn't really have something right there. This would encourage there be something visually on the map to show that there would be a low-stress bike connection between the neighborhood and the commercial area. Period.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Landtelleme, and thank you and apologies again, Commissioner Peterson. Ms. Gabor, I think then that we're covered. I'm sorry to have brought you in on my own misunderstanding. I am going to read the lack of hands as, as, as okay to move along to the question about whether the language referencing National Landing gives the geographical context request by the planning commission. Again, I'm inferring a cent or at least consent or at least a cent from the lack of hands on this one that, you know, I think that we, you know, I, Ms. Segal, I think that you have your answer on that one. I think that people are satisfied with, with what resulted from our recommendation. Does the plan support a robust approach to sustainability, energy efficiency and climate? Is there anyone who wants to be recognized on this issue? Sufficiency of engagement. Commissioner Schroll, I see your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not quick enough on the trigger on sustainability. If you would indulge me to go back.
Of course, please.
All right. Question for staff. In the section 4.1 of the draft, I think we talked about last time, there's this policy approach, the third bullet that addresses that buildings should be encouraged as feasible, electric buildings should be encouraged as feasible and, you know, talks about a variety of things in turn, including indoor air quality, et cetera, and ends by kind of highlighting electric vehicles specifically. But if you go down to the implementation actions, it doesn't mirror that language as precisely. And it, it really just encourages kind of new technologies, but it's not around electrification of buildings as precisely, or sorry, as generally. It is more about electric vehicle charging more explicitly. So, again, I would like to know from staff, is the implementation action envisioned to be broad and include building electrification more, more generally?
I think Mr. Matuzik.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, we're trying to have consistency between language that shows up in the development framework and the implementation matrix. So I, I appreciate that being highlighted and could certainly go back and see if maybe with some subtle word changes, we can make sure it's clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be helpful. And then I just wanted to ask one other question in the, about sustainability. So in the, just, you know, there isn't a policy approach around this, but in the description about sustainability, there's, you know, objectives about, you know, broader things like stormwater and, and heat island effects, so and kind of impervious surface and a variety of things there, also renewable energy. But if you could go down to the implementation actions, you don't see any of those necessarily called out as explicitly, noting that, that lead also addresses these, so they're encompassed in there. So, and certainly a gold-level building is probably, you know, already addressing these. But I just didn't know if, if staff were, was trying to call them out and any, any other implementation actions or was just using kind of lead as a way to achieve some of that.
Yeah, I think the biggest strategy in the plan tries to allude to and refer folks to the Community Energy Plan, which already has a lot of that language built in, but more importantly, allowing that reference to continue moving forward as the Community Energy Plan at some point may be updated, revised, and we want this sector plan to benefit from those subsequent changes that may happen elsewhere. So we didn't want to be too prescriptive in where we think we are today, knowing that that entire industry is evolving so quickly. How do we make sure that midterm and long-term projects can benefit from what would likely be more aggressive standards and expectations? But again, I, I think in the exercise that I've given myself a note to, come back and check the implementation matrix, I can keep an eye on it for that as well and, and track where changes have been made.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Moving along to sufficiency of engagement. Anyone have anything additional that they want to offer on this? Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, I, I just would like some clarification on behalf of, you know, the folks that spoke tonight that they appeared in the River House to not know about this. What, what was the communication or how did the signs inform or whatever? Just if staff has already reviewed what the engagement was, but perhaps can shed some light into, you know, what specific things were done to hopefully encourage involvement by River House residents.
Mr. Matuzik, if, if, if the person who is online as meeting guest is staff, I'm going to ask you to, to clarify who you are. Otherwise, please remember that the commission is with the discussion, the discussion is with the commission at this point. But that said, Mr. Matuzik to you.
It's difficult to comprehensively address everything that was mentioned earlier in the evening without acknowledging, you know, our engagement efforts continue to adapt, advance and get better. There's no perfect, I think, outreach process. I think what we try to do is not only utilize everything at our disposal in our ever-growing toolbox, but also rely on our partners in the community to, I think, further disseminate that message and rely on their respective networks to get the word out as these things happen. I think genuinely, we tried our best to reach out as many people as we have in the summer of 2020, you know, before a lot of this work even started to take place. We spent about two months just doing stakeholder interviews with individuals and individual group representatives, asking a lot of pointed questions, which I remember one speaker, I think, noted, even as simple as what do you think is wrong? What do you think needs to change? What, what could this plan address? And we've got a lot of great feedback that really informed a lot of what ended up happening later. Now, did we go far enough? I, sure, I, I guess that at some point, you know, folks can start to go knocking door to door and making sure we reach every single resident. But rather than, I think, trying to compare numbers of how many attendees we had and how many people signed a certain petition, I think what really needs to be highlighted is what in fact does represent a successful Arlington Way. And I, I think that term, at least most recently in this area, has been misinterpreted. I think if you look at the substance of the conversations that have taken place and the makeup of this focus group that we by design selected folks we knew had opposing interests, different backgrounds, different perspectives and, and education levels, some lived in the area, some lived outside, we knew that by putting all those folks in the same room for a full year and meeting on a regular basis, engaging with them through a very intentional, rational approach of how we solve and reach an ultimate solution, I really stand behind the process that took place. And it is because of the makeup of that group and the hours that they spent together that I feel confident in what we are recommending is appropriate. Could it benefit from additional, you know, folks in the area participating? Absolutely. It can always do that. But I think what gets lost in that conversation is that you start to have less and less of a meaningful conversation when you get beyond 50 and 60 people in the same room. So at some point, a successful planning process does need to rely on representatives that speak to and share information and collect information from larger audiences. And I think that's what was happening here. Clearly, there was probably something lacking in the Arlington Rich Civic Association where, as you heard earlier tonight, some folks only learned about this late in the process. That is unfortunate. And I think we're trying our best to continually respond to things that they are highlighting because many of them have been considered earlier in the process. Other folks have brought those ideas up and we have responded to them. And I think the reason they are not being depicted in the plan is because it really exemplifies the balancing act that this plan calls for and all the different competing priorities. And I think if you look at the very few limited ways to deliver on what's been expected in Pentagon City moving forward, if it is to absorb the level of growth that is happening, even outside in nearby Crystal City, there's only so many ways to achieve that by having a willing partner and a property owner, having not so much of a reliance on the county CIP funding to deliver the different things, and so many other factors that have been involved, which by the way, were not just created by staff, but we had incredible consultant team, some of which were just economic analysts that were reviewing the numbers. We weren't just listening to property owners and telling, asking, you know, what is it going to take? There was a lot of verification that went in place. And I think if you ask many of the folks that represent so-called corporate interests, they didn't get everything they were want, that they wanted in this plan. We made it very difficult to redevelop because we knew it is only through those aggressive standards that Pentagon City can become, what we've heard it could. And its current state right now does not resemble what many had as a vision for moving forward. So in that balancing act of competing priorities and interests, this represents, I think, what a pure Arlington Way process is. It gives something to everyone, but it doesn't give everything to everyone. And I think the frustration that you heard earlier tonight is really coming from a specific stakeholder group. That's true, will, will impact this much more than others because of their proximity to the River House property. But I think it also, in doing that, the messaging is really minimizing, if not completely ignoring, the other benefits that will come with the plan. And I think if we're going to have an honest conversation about the pure value and benefits, we need to consider all of that as opposed to just the pure density that's depicted here.
Thank you, Mr. Matuzik. Commissioner Hughes, and then if there are no other.
Can I just say one? Yeah, I'm sorry.
My mic keeps getting lower. I have comments and I wasn't sure what was going on. So.
So I'm going to go, because it's round robin, I'm going to go to Commissioner Hughes and then to Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Steinberger, you're, you're listed as meeting guest and as an attendee. Madam Clerk, maybe you or someone can, can make that change on the list. We do still have another item to get to. Commissioner Hughes.
I'll be brief and I do, I do want to speak, I guess, as one of the gray-haired folks actually on the commission in the sense that I have been on the commission now for seven years. And we heard this evening from former Commissioner Sockwell, whose time precedes me, and of course Commissioner Segal, former Commissioner Segal, who helped tremendously in this efforts. I, I have to say, and as all of you know, I'm, I'm not lacking on what I wish to criticize, but the reality of it is that the engagement process staff has gone through is tremendous in this effort. And it should be noted that. And Mr. Matuzik did a great job of highlighting how all processes can always be improved. But honestly, we have achieved in this process, an engagement process that is superior than we have in the seven years I have seen on an item that is exceptionally difficult. And I think what's always lost in the community in these conversations, and I will be brief, Commissioner Ware, is that the status quo is not a guarantee to stay the status quo. And it's important to remember that change happens and we have to sort of manage that change. And this is the process we do. And it is never simple, it is never easy, and it is never without trade-offs. But I do wish to say, I heard the criticism this night, I thought about it very carefully and then I have known the engagement that has gone on, I've seen the outreach that's gone on from staff and I can compare it to the last seven years of outreach I have seen from staff. And it should not go without this evening without saying clearly, staff has done an incredible job on the outreach and we do need to note that. And can it always be improved? Yes. But there was this one, the best one we've done in a long time. It's the best I've seen so far. Thank you, Commissioner Ware.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I'm going to go to Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I, I think really, and I'm, I'm sensitive to what Commissioner Hughes just said and the other comments, and I know how hard staff has worked on this. I think that what it really comes down to for me is that I'm not sure that there's a level of enough that community engagement can ever evolve to or deliver that will satisfy or meet the needs of all constituents and all people involved in a process. I think that's really going to vary on your perspective and your relationship with a topic, a project, a, a situation as, as it arises. I'm sympathetic that there is a pandemic and that that has changed a lot of how we do outreach. It's changed a lot of people's bandwidth to participate in outreach. And I think that, you know, that, that's in some ways or in many ways increased the hurdle of what is sufficient outreach from a baseline. That said, ultimately, I, I have seen the high level of outreach engagement with the community that staff undertook and the process went through, hearing the number of participants who did engage in each of these community meetings as they were held, you know, reinforces for me that outreach did happen, appropriate outreach happened, and it happened at a high level. Will, will any outreach ever reach every person impacted by a decision? I don't know that that's ever possible. And certainly I think, you know, moving towards a goal of more and more community engagement is a good thing. But I, I see this process as having moved in that direction and for having managed the process in that, you know, on a difficult project during very difficult circumstances overall. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, I want to compliment Mr. Matuzik for describing for folks who don't really understand what staff does go through and as a former Civic Association president in a very dense area of Arlington where it was not easy to knock on doors and try to make sure that everybody in a building knew something about what was possibly going to happen next door, you know, the level that staff does have to go through and it has, I will concur with Commissioner Hughes, it has improved a lot and they are still working on that. And again, to the community, I would just suggest that you stay involved in this. The SPRC process offers the opportunity for you to specifically speak to the changes as each of these things may redevelop in the future. And I would strongly encourage you to keep all your notes from this so that you can apply those and your thoughts as it moves forward. But you should know, as somebody who sat on the other side of this for many years, that this has improved greatly. And, you know, as Commissioner Steinberger pointed out, we can't reach 100% of the people. And luckily with the pandemic, we've been able to actually reach more because, you know, people could do this without having to get up and go to a meeting someplace that might not actually be, you know, convenient for them. So, thank you.
I, Commissioner Schroll? Thank you, Commissioner Bagley.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'll be quick. I just want to concur with, with Commissioner Hughes as one of the old gray-haired ones. I just want to concur with Commissioner Hughes as one of the old gray-haired ones that shares that virtual dias with him. So, thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Are there any other topics that anyone wishes to discuss before we get into motions? Bearing in mind, it's 10-10, we still have an entire item to get through. Going all three times. Ms. Siegel, I am going to ask you to entertain a motion to, so that we can, so that we can get moving on this point.
I, actually, we had, did we not say that it might be best coming from?
You're right, we did. It is 10-10, and I apologize, I'm going to go to Commissioner Letalme for the motion.
Thank you. Yes, I'm prepared to offer a motion here. I move that the planning commission, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the following elements associated with the Pentagon City Planning Study. Number one, attached resolution one to adopt the Pentagon City Sector Plan, which is, which is attachment two. Number two, the attached resolution, attachment three, to amend the general land use plan, GLUP map and booklet, see attachments four A, four B, and five. Number three, the attached resolution, which is attachment six, to amend the master transportation plan, the MTP map, see attachment seven. And number four, attached ordinance, which is attachment eight, to amend the Arlington County zoning ordinance, section 6.5 RA 6-15 multifamily dwelling district, section 7.12 CO dash zero, CO dash 2.5 mixed-use district, and section nine, special planning area regulations, see attachment nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Letalme. And to be clear, this is the, you're starting us off with the staff recommended motion, correct?
Exactly.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Sarley, thank you. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Are there any amendments to the main motion?
This, the motion that I had mentioned earlier with Commissioner Peterson, I think that can be a standalone. I don't think we need to have it actually amend the existing one.
I am going to then call the roll on the main motion. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Giren.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Letalme.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel is absent. Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Roll.
Mr. Chairman, before I vote, is Commissioner Letalme's motion amending the sector plan?
It's not so much amending it as it's asking the staff to denote, I can read it for you, but it would be to denote the need for a low stress bike connection.
So, Commissioner Schroll, I, having, having discussed this prior with Commissioner Letalme, I agree that it suffices as a standalone motion and would then be an additional recommendation to the county board in the independent of our recommendation to, alongside our recommendation to adopt the staff recommended action.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you both. I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Commissioner Steinberger?
Sorry, aye. Commissioner Steinberger votes aye. Apologies.
And I vote aye as well. Commissioner Letalme, do you have an additional motion?
Yes, I do. And my motion is, I move that the planning commission recommend that staff denote, as staff sees fit within the Pentagon City Sector Plan, the need for a low-stress bike connection between the commercial portion of Joyce Street that runs past Pentagon Row slash West Post and the residential portion of Joyce Street in Aurora Highlands.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hughes. Is that correct?
Yes. Commissioner Hughes, second.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton.
Your hand is up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have another motion, my freezing, so I may not be interjecting in the right place.
Okay, I will call on you. Unless, okay, so it's, because it's on a different topic, I will call on you after we've disposed of this one. Does anyone else wish to be heard on the motion? Or Commissioner Letalme, you wish to speak to the motion?
I think I already addressed it when Commissioner Peterson asked about it. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them quickly now. But otherwise, we will be bringing ourselves in line with the Transportation Commission if we vote to approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner Letalme. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Giren.
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Letalme.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
I vote as well, I vote aye as well. The motion passes 10 to zero, and for the record, the initial motion also passed 10 to zero. Commissioner Morton.
Thank you, Chair Ware. At your encouragement, I hadn't intended to do this, although I care deeply about it, I have a suggested motion, which is, I move that, and I emailed this to my colleagues just now, and Giselle, I move that the planning commission recommend the county board direct staff to, when developing methods for measuring equity, be informed by a rigorous study using scientific survey methodologies and/or the contributions of an anthropologist or sociologist to ensure that the county is gaining the true lived experience and point of view of, quote, "a diverse range of people and cultural practices." And that last language is drawn directly from the equity section of the plan.
Thank you. I'm going to have you read that one more time, just so the people are following along.
Yeah. I move that the planning commission recommend the county board direct staff to, comma, when developing methods for measuring equity, be informed by a rigorous study using scientific survey methodologies and/or the contributions of an anthropologist or sociologist to ensure that the county is gaining the true lived experience and point of view of, quote, "a diverse range of people and cultural practices."
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
That's Commissioner Bagley?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Morton, if you would like to speak to your motion beyond what you've already spoken to, I would invite you to do so.
Yeah, just briefly, again, the concept I mentioned that's in the plan, like, concepts like a sense of welcome, belonging, broad awareness of engagement opportunities, et cetera, I think need to be studied with some nuance. Adding a checklist to our process, which isn't always as inclusive as we would like, is good, but it's not necessarily sufficient in and of itself. Even engaging something like an anthropologist to look at that checklist could be helpful or conduct some sort of public survey that expands and complements our existing normal stakeholder input.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. I appreciate so much the intent of this suggestion, and I just worry that maybe it's a little bit too specific with naming the specific people that should be consulted, and maybe if it was more general, suggesting we call upon Arlington's Chief Diversity Officer to provide the guidance. And I say that, you know, you may have expertise in this, and if so, I am happy to step down. I was just thinking that we have somebody on Arlington County staff that could provide the, like, very specific, exact guidance that we need to measure the performance of the program, and so I just wanted to make sure we are acknowledging her expertise.
Yeah, and I, there's nothing in this proposed motion that's intended to go around that process, and in fact, I think that's a great point. I'm basically trying to get a sort of a social scientist look at this as opposed to our traditional planning look, and maybe that's exactly something that would complement what the equity officer would be trying to do. I think it's appropriate. I don't know how to work it into my own motion, but it certainly, you know, would be the intent of what I'm proposing.
Would you be leaving that to the letter, or are you asking for unanimous consent to add a clause, something like, and with input from the county's chief diversity officer or something like that? I'll leave you out, I'll let you actually speak the words.
Yeah. I would seek unanimous consent to add in collaboration or with contributions from the county's chief equity officer. So I would.
Hearing no objections, that's include that the motion is amended. Commissioner Sarley.
A slightly tangential, and I apologize ahead of time that I haven't fully formulated my thoughts on this, but as we were talking about equity on the plan, I was sort of thinking on inputs and outputs where we're trying to attract, you know, diverse, diversity into our community. And I, one of the things we have to make sure, and I think this was kind of, yeah, stated in Commissioner Morton's motion, is that, you know, it's, it's one thing to have people come here, it's another thing to give them a place where they feel that they have a cultural venue or a cult, you know, literally, but like, so they have a place to output, express, and fully satisfy their, you know, social, cultural patterns. And one of the things I was thinking about was sort of like, we have a lot of facilities for like a 12-year-old that wants to play soccer, but, you know, are we having the same sort of facilities and sort of opportunities? And again, I haven't formulated this ahead of time for things like, you know, what if that same 12-year-old wants to do ballet or do more sort of community theater or do, you know? So I'm just, I just wonder, like, if there's something that we can talk about going future in these planning exercises where we think about how we attract people, but then we make sure that the environment is a place where they can express and fully, again, I'm sort of struggling with words here, but hopefully you sort of get the gist of what I'm trying to say. And I think it's somewhat alike with Commissioner Morton's comments, and it's something that sort of was triggered by this idea of equity in our planning processes. I think, you know, input and output is sort of the best terminology that I've come up with so far, but I strongly support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. If no one else wishes to be heard on this, I'm going to go to the roll, starting with Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Giren.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
Aye.
Commissioner Letalme.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel is absent. Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries 10 to zero. Are there any other motions on this item? Thank you all, thank you to the staff, thank you to the people who have stuck around watching, who gave public comment. This item is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the tonight's second item?
Yes, I almost forgot there was a second item. Item number two is Z dash 2627 dash 21 dash 1 and U dash 3605 dash 21 dash 1, Fillmore Center, as we know it, the Elliott. We have Ebony Dumas, I'm sorry, Ebony Dumas to present this item. She is the project manager on this project this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Dumas.
Thank you, and good evening. So yes, my name is Ebony Dumas. I am an associate planner in the county's planning division, and this agenda item is a redevelopment of the Fillmore Gardens Shopping Center at 601 Columbia Pike, also known as the Elliott, application for a commercial form-based code special exception use permit. This is a mixed-use building with 247 residential units and approximately 51,000 square feet of non-residential space on the ground story. Prior to turning it over to the applicant team, I will provide some context with particular attention to the form-based code requirements and the review process that took place to confirm the application meets and in some cases exceeds the form-based code requirements. So here we see the property is on the eastern portion of Columbia Pike, located on the north side of Columbia Pike, near the intersection of Walter Reed and the Columbia Pike Commercial Center's Revitalization Overlay District. The property, which is outlined in purple, encompasses approximately 92,000 square feet of land, and the project site, which is in yellow, is approximately 66,000 square feet. The site is currently developed as a one-story commercial shopping center with a variety of small-scale retail, office, and exhibition space totaling about 36,000 square feet today. There's also a surface parking lot east of the building. West of the building, there is another surface parking lot and a one-story commercial building that is one of the county's historic resources. When looking at the form-based code regulating plan, the subject site is identified by the Main Street frontage. The form-based code prescribes development requirements for each site in the Columbia Pike Revitalization Overlay Districts, and we see the regulating plan calls for the subject site to deliver a new segment of the South Cleveland Street, an alley at the rear of the property, and a new public park, which will be the second phase of Penn Road Square Plaza. Additionally, the Main Street frontage designation, the building envelope standards generally call for the items on the right, listed on the right. Along with staff, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group reviews each application to ensure it meets the requirements. There are neither LEED nor affordability requirements in the commercial form-based code, however, the applicant is taking the initiative to secure a LEED silver certification. Here we can see the proposed program and aerial view. Of note, I say we can see the required new segment of Cleveland Street and the rear alley, just as we saw on the regulating plan is being met. East of the property line is the existing Penn Road Square, and this project would dedicate the land necessary to complete the second phase of the park, which will nearly double the size of this public space as the Park Master Plan also calls for. Prior to the land dedication, the interim park will serve as a staging area during construction. And in addition to the public open space, here we can also see the form-based code required private open space that will be delivered via the three courtyard spaces and a small rooftop amenity area. The six-story building will have five stories of residential, and while it is proposed to be predominantly one bedrooms and studios, there are two-bedroom options included. The proposed design exceeds the minimum parking requirements for cars and meets the exact number for bicycle parking. The building will also include a pedestrian passageway to activate the grocery store entrance and provide a visual break from this long facade, which is also a requirement of the form-based code. The determination of two different ground stories, that would be Columbia Pike and South Cleveland Street, allows for the building's program to maintain its six-story intent while also being responsive to the significant grade change. We are here tonight because this property, this project, pardon me, requires a special exception use permit to be approved by the county board. First, this is because the building footprint and the site area exceed the form-based code by right threshold. Additionally, there are two allowed modifications that are being requested for county board approval. A is the finished ground story elevation due to the grade change, and B, the Columbia Pike frontage meets the RBL requirements. However, the Cleveland Street frontage does not meet that requirement due to a utility line that, utility line that runs along the frontage, and the applicant will present this in a little bit more detail. So along with the use permit application, the applicant today is also requesting a rezoning from C2 to CPF. a rezoning from C2 to CPFBC. The Form-Based Code does not require this rezoning, and most Form-Based Code applications do not include a rezoning. However, the applicant applied for the rezoning in order to have access to signage above 40 feet as the existing C2 zoning does not permit signage at that height. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant will later need to submit a comprehensive sign plan for review for this one proposed sign. The rezoning is not needed for any other signs, and approving the rezoning is not an approval of the rooftop sign. So here we have the review process schedule that we've undergone, and interdepartmental group of county staff have worked with the applicant throughout 2020 and 2021 to provide technical review and guidance that has brought the design into compliance with the Form-Based Code. Additionally, the FBC Advisory Working Group reviewed the proposal's ability to meet the code, and the applicant has met with the host and adjacent civic associations and the Columbia Pike Partnership, both as are required by the Form-Based Code. And after tonight's meeting, the applicant is scheduled to be heard at the County Board's recess meeting on Tuesday, February 15. As the application complies with the Form-Based Code and other applicable county regulations, it is staff recommendation to approve the rezoning request and the use permit. And so now I will turn it over to the applicant to discuss their design in more detail.
Thank you, Ms. Dumas.
Ms. Johnson, may I please have the capability to share my screen? Thank you.
I'm a Smith. We see this. Okay, thank you.
Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
And see me?
Cannot see you, but I can hear you.
Okay. So, good evening Chairman Weir and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Tad Longer. I'm the land use attorney for this project. I want to say how excited we are to finally be in front of you this evening. The this project has been a work in progress for several years now. As you know, it is a very prominent site in the town center on Columbia Pike, which was envisioned to accomplish a number of planning and community goals. The culmination of these goals has informed every aspect of this proposal to give you some context before we turn it over to the architects for the details. The project proposal. The project includes four outdoor amenity spaces for residents proposing the conveyance and construction of the land for the planned new segment of South Cleveland Street. Sorry, that was my camera. The conveyance of the substantial amount of land area needed for the completion of the park for for the for the town center that was begun at Penrose. Our architecture was informed and inspired to complement and pay homage to the historic properties to the west of the site. And we're bringing a new grocer to Columbia Pike, and we're able to retain CVS as a tenant on the east side of the site. We've also focused on pedestrian connectivity as Ebony mentioned through the block, north and south with Fillmore Gardens and to the east to what will be the much larger completed park. We've done quite a bit of community outreach to get here today. We've met with the civic associations on more than one occasion, the county on many, many occasions, the Columbia Pike Partnership, and all of our neighboring property owners. And of course, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group. So what you see tonight has been informed by all that input. I don't want to spend too much time talking, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Sarah Davidson, a principal from Insight Property Group, who is running this project. And with that, I'll let you go at it, Sarah.
Good evening, everybody. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the of the Commission. We're here represented by Insight Property Group, our Land Use Attorney Empreza, our Architecture Team, MVNA Architects, and our Civil Engineering Team, Bowman Engineering. We're very pleased to have the opportunity to speak to you about our proposed mixed-use project, the Elliott. Just as a way of brief background, Insight is an Arlington-based real estate company that focuses on the acquisition and development of residential and mixed-use communities in the Washington metropolitan region. We have developed affordable housing, acquired workforce housing, and have built quite a number of kind of Class A residential and mixed-use communities. Since our inception as a company, we have been keenly interested in investing and working on Columbia Pike. We really appreciate the unique character of this neighborhood and how it brings many people and communities together. We are privileged to be the joint venture partner for the redevelopment of the site with the current owners of this, the Fillmore Retail Center. And we really look forward to redeveloping this space as a mixed-use kind of community in this central and critical node of Columbia Pike. Over the last year and a half, we've been engaged with a wide variety of community stakeholders to discuss our project and share ideas about how to successfully weave into the fabric of this neighborhood. Some of the things that we have heard and responded to include creating an interesting architecture that on the one hand respects the surrounding historic buildings, but also creates a slightly differentiated point of view from some of the other larger residential projects on Columbia Pike. To think about the long-term sustainability strategies in our design, to find ways to provide retail space not only for a large grocer, but for some of the retailers who have been on the Pike for a while. And also to find, to help accelerate the delivery of the Phase Two of Penrose Square Park. Today, we propose a 247-unit grocery-anchored project with a couple spaces that will be able to accommodate local retailers from Columbia Pike. We are committing to achieving a minimum level of LEED Silver Certification, although it's not required by the Form-Based Code. We are proposing a building and dedicating the extension of South Cleveland Park, which serves as an important connector through this neighborhood and also connects us to our immediate neighbor to the east of us. And also dedicating the land necessary for construction of that second phase of Penrose Square Park. We believe that our building and this project and its uses will strengthen this important node and will further the objective of making this a strong community gathering space on the Pike. Before I turn it over to our architect Neville Fernandez, who will talk through the nitty-gritty of of the plan, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Arlington County staff for their ongoing conversation engagement on helping us think through this plan through this form-based code process. Neville.
I think I'm unable to turn my video. I'm going to continue. Oh, thanks. There you go. Good evening, everybody. My name is Neville Fernandez. I'm a senior associate with MVNA Architects and one of the planners and architects on the project. And it's my honor today to walk everybody through the project. Can we go to the next page, please? Thank you. This is the existing site context, and I think Ebony did a good job of explaining the context here. I won't I won't go into too much detail other than just mentioning that we border Columbia Pike on this, Columbia Pike borders the south edge of our property with Fillmore Gardens to the north. The historic two-story building lies to the west of our project site at the corner of Walter Reed and Columbia Pike. You are seeing Cleveland Street, North Cleveland Street and South Cleveland Street on either side of the property line. And you'll see in a minute how South Cleveland Street connects with Main Throat South as well as the drive aisle or the alley at the back along the northern edge of our property. You're also seeing the existing park in front of Penrose Square Apartments that abuts our property, and you'll see how we're extending that park, or at least we're having an interim condition to make that portion of the site usable before the park is completed by the county. Next slide, please. Again, I think Adneha has shown this. This is just showing the Form-Based Code regulating plan. We do have Cleveland Street and Columbia Pike shown as Main Street frontage, and we have designed the site accordingly with that in mind. Next slide, please. Next two slides show some existing photographs of what the site actually looks like today. The two on this page show the conditions along Columbia Pike. The one on the top left shows a view from the southeast corner of the property. You see the CVS and the parking lot east of the shopping center and the breeder brothers at the right of the right edge of the site. Columbia Pike snakes up on the left side of that photograph. The image at the bottom left shows Columbia Pike and also shows the two-story historic a portion of the two-story historic building that abuts us on the western edge. You are seeing that parking lot to the west of the shopping center in this view and generally the frontage of the project along Columbia Pike. Next slide, please. These two show the northeast and northwest corner of the site. The image at the top left is taken at the northwest corner of the site. Currently, it's more of an access aisle that gets you access towards the parking, or at least gets you through to the back for loading service functions. The image at the bottom left shows a view from the parking lot just to the east of the CVS. And you're kind of, you're kind of standing where South Cleveland is supposed to pass through. And you're looking beyond at Fillmore Garden Apartments and at North Cleveland Street. You can see the challenges there with the grade and the current topography as it exists. Next, please. So this is the proposed site plan. You're seeing the proposed Cleveland Street coming through and dividing the project site into two, an eastern portion, a smaller eastern portion that is going to become an extension to the existing park. But till the county can build it, we have an interim condition where it will be usable by the public and will contribute much newer public space in a dense environment like this. On the west side of proposed Cleveland Street is where you see the mixed-use building. You're seeing the three courtyards that Tad mentioned with the rooftop amenity as private amenities available to the residents of the building. You're also seeing the existing historic building to the west of the mixed-use building. And then of course, the Columbia Pike and Drive While bordering the south and north face of the project. Next, please. So here's the, here's the retail or the main retail grocer level plan. Before I explain what's happening in this plan, I just want to point out some of the dashed colored lines you're seeing. The dashed green lines going across the north and south edge of the project is the property line. You're also seeing a dashed red line. That is the RBL as given to us by the county. And you're seeing that the building, the project really does hug that RBL along Columbia Pike, but does not do so along Cleveland Street. And the reason is those, is the two dashed blue lines that you see along the eastern edge of the project and the northern edge of the project. That is a 15 foot setback along two really large stormwater pipes. One of them goes right along the property line between Fillmore Garden Apartments in the north and our project site. And the other one kind of goes through the parking lot just east of the existing CVS. The 15-foot setback is counted not from the center of the pipe. These are huge pipes. They're at least, I think, four feet or five feet in diameter. And they're buried. The 15-foot setback is measured from the edge of the pipes. So we can't really build within that 15-foot setback. And that setback unfortunately pushes the whole building away from Cleveland, from the RBL on Cleveland Street because it's buried right, right where the RBL is shown. However, in the following slides, you'll see how you've taken that as an opportunity to kind of create some really interesting and exciting public space along Cleveland Street and also make use of the challenging grade that you saw in the existing photos. In general, you're also seeing on this level, you're seeing the passageway that's cutting through between the rez lobby and the grocer, and that is partly mandated by the block size requirements of the Form-Based Code. We need to be less than 350. We are. We have a 342 and 10 inches. But we want this passageway to be meaningful, so we've made sure that the entrances to the grocer, the entrances to the rez lobby flank this passageway. The passageway doesn't just connect Columbia Pike with the alley at the back. Well, it goes through, and we are building a connecting trail to meet with the existing trail within Fillmore Garden Apartments. So if anybody from Fillmore Garden Apartments or from the neighborhood of the north wants to just walk to the grocery store or bike to the grocery store, they can do so. Not only that, they're also providing a little bike room that you're seeing just north of the rez lobby. So again, you know, allowing not just pedestrians, but even bikers to kind of find a way park there, find their way to activities within the project. Last but not the least, Columbia Pike is fairly sloped. It's not the best place for outdoor seating. The passageway is relatively flat in some areas, so they're using that as an opportunity to provide some outdoor seating areas for the grocer and again, just make the passageway more of a just a cut through, but really a real connection between the neighborhood to the north and the neighborhood to the south in our project. The existing, when we look at the existing site plan, I thought I'd mention that, you know, there's four curb cuts right now along Columbia Pike into those two parking lots flanking the existing shopping center. Well, in this project right now as proposed, there is no curb cut along Columbia Pike. You will not be taking a turn from Columbia Pike into the project on Columbia Pike, which means uninterrupted pedestrian access along this front. Same thing with Cleveland Street. There is no curb cut along Cleveland Street except, of course, at the northeast corner where we meet with the drive aisle. So if you're coming to this project by car, or if you're a truck, or you're coming by loading, you are not taking a right from Columbia Pike into the project. You are going at the back and you're accessing the ramp that takes you down. The ramp that you can see at the top left corner where you see the words 190, that's the ramp that takes you down to the parking in the project, and that's access from the back at the drive aisle. So you can get to it from Walter Reed, or you can get to it from Main Throat South, but you really, you know, you have to go around the block to get there. Same thing, you're seeing all the loading. You're seeing the angled grocer loading. You're seeing retail and residential loading. All of that is again handled from this drive aisle at the back and not, with no access from Columbia Pike. So again, that really helps us activate Columbia Pike in Cleveland, you know, without any interruptions by a vehicle, which we think is just, just a great thing. Can we, I think that that's really it on this page. So can we go to the next page, please? So this is the first P1 level. That's, so the ramps at the, at the, at the top left take you down. You can see the ramps coming down on the western edge of this project, and they take you down to this first level where you can park, and you're seeing the grocer vestibule and grocer elevators in green, which will take you directly into the store. So so if you're, if you're coming by car, that's kind of your flow into the grocer or into the passageway. On the right side of this plan, you're seeing the CVS where it's going to be located. It's pretty much very close to where it's located today, except now it's going to be part of a mixed-use building. And CVS will have a corner entrance. So again, leveraging the corner of Cleveland and Columbia to create a presence there at that intersection. Next slide, please. Next slide is just the level below P2. It's all parking, and this level will have shared as well as some Next slide is just the level below P2. It's all parking, and this level will have shared as well as some dedicated residential parking. You can, all the elevator cores are clustered at the east or the west, western end of the project. So a lot of ways to get up into the building, whether you're retail or residential. Next slide, please. P3 is almost identical to P2. Again, it's mostly dedicated residential parking and elevator connections to the residential from this floor. Next, please. There are a few areas where we do have mezzanines, especially along the residential lobby. And we also have an amenity floor that is connected to the rez elevator shafts as seen on the eastern edge of the project. We love the fact that the amenity is here. It's going to be overlooking Cleveland Street, and it's going to be overlooking the park across from Cleveland Street. So it's just perfect. You have activation not just at the ground floor where you have CVS, but also at the second floor where you will have the residential amenity looking out toward that street. Next, please. Before we go into the other plans, just wanted to show the section so you can understand pretty simple typical mixed-use section with the parking mostly below grade and the retail utilizing the activation along the streets and then the residential stacked on top of the retail. Next, please. So this brings us to the typical residential floor plan. There's three courtyards, two of them kind of internal. The middle courtyard is used in a way to also help break down the massing along the north face that's facing Fillmore Gardens. So you kind of have two residential buildings flanking the courtyard and the grocer mechanical space. The third pool courtyard is overlooking the passageway and also is open to Columbia Pike utilizing the southern exposure there. What's great about this is while we are activating the passageway at the ground floor, well, especially during summer, you know, you will, when you're walking on this passageway, you will hear and you will see activity at the pool courtyard. And, you know, there's also units overlooking there. So there's a lot of eyes on the street, so to speak. So we're very happy that that courtyard is opened and is exposed to Columbia Pike and is not enclosed. Next, please. This is the fifth level of the residential. This is the level where you see the rooftop amenity at the top right corner and also the massing that's carved to preserve a six-story massing across all sides of the project irrespective of grade. Next, please. And this is just the roof plan that just shows a conceptual condenser layout for the roof. Next, please. Now, just the elevations, very simple elevation and build go or some of the design philosophies when we look at the renderings. But we've used all the tools in the Form Based Code to kind of structure this project by understanding the street facades and making sure that the retail has a base and the retail has a presence. And the residential is rightly, has a slightly different presence than the retail. These two elevations show the Columbia Pike elevation on the top and the Cleveland Street elevation at the bottom. And you can see the distinction between the retail and the residential. Next, please.
Mr. Fernandez, I want to point out that it is 10:53, and the commission has to discuss this item before we are kicked off by the direction of the county manager for his timing. So if there's a possibility that you can bring this in for a landing, just watch it turn out that you have two slides left, in which case I apologize, but please proceed.
Sure, yeah. I can skip that. This is the north elevation and the west elevation. Much of it is not on the RPL. None of this is on the RPL. Next, please. This just shows a detail of the interim park that's been proposed and also the landscape along Cleveland Street and how that public space is not provided, even though the building is not at the RPL. Next, please. I think we have a few more views now. Again, just some quick aerial views that give you a sense of the sidewalk and the massing of the building. Next, please. This is just from the other side. Next, please. I think this is a very important view. I'll spend 30 seconds here. This is taken at the intersection of Walter Reed and Columbia Pike. We thought it was very, very important when we're designing that we are aware of the historic context and the buildings that we are abutting. And you're seeing in this view that we have modeled the historic building next to us. And we really love the clarity of the design that surrounds us in some of the historic buildings. And we use that as a guiding philosophy for the design on our side of the site where we made sure that the retail followed the same simple rules that you see in good historic buildings. And the residential does the same with a very nice cadence across the project phase. Next, please. This is just a nighttime view. And again, just focusing on, you know, where you look at the retail, you know it's retail. There's this large windows, this shop fronts that let you see into the stores. While the residential is laid with a very different kind of cadence and with Julia balconies and projecting balconies to give it that residential character. Also seeing the courtyard here facing Columbia Pike. Next, please.
Mr. Fernandez, how many slides do you have left? We really do are at a spot where if we're not able to finish the deliberation, we're going to have to recess and then call you and your team back tomorrow night. So please keep a lot.
I think this is the last slide. Yeah, this is the last slide right here. That's again, just the views from all the sides of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, we do not have any speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are we joined by representatives of any other commissions this evening?
No, we're not.
So then Commissioner Hughes, and thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and to your colleagues as well as to the staff for the presentations.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you to staff. Of course, Ebony did a great job of doing the setup.
Commissioner Hughes, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have to excuse myself for a moment. Commissioner Schroll has agreed to hold on to the gavel for a few moments. I will be paying attention.
Perfect. For my fellow commissioners, I know that this is, you know, always my opportunity. And I always take advantage of plugging the Form Based Code and some of the benefits of the Form Based Code. This evening, you'll see that our long list of public speakers and fellow commissioners who have many poignant things to add is a big old goose egg. And the reason that that happens, and it is important for everyone to note, is there was a long and deliberative process. And we stand on the shoulder of giants who helped build the original plan and work to ensure that the balancing act of many different areas were heard, communicated, and then held to. And I just think it's very important for us all to remember because what it does is create a balance of expectations within the community of things that will be delivered, how they will be delivered. And more importantly, a matter for developers is also to have expectations for what is to be requested of them. This evening, we had an excellent presentation. You are clear. The question before us, as I highlighted in my conversation with each of you in my moat, is, does the application before us meet the Form Based Code? If it does not, which it doesn't, we have the two variations we see, are those variations acceptable to the commission and recommended to the board? And those are the fundamental questions we have before us. The applicant has done an amazing job here, I believe. This is a very interesting building. You've heard they already committed to Lee Silver within their proposal. They may even go more, which would be amazing on the Pike. That would be, I think, a first. And so this is a really great proposal. I look forward to any questions you all have. But do remember in our conversation that we have to structure it separately from a site plan. It is an important thing. This is more such as a single-family home development. Did you meet the setbacks? Where's your appropriate lot coverage there is the way to contextualize your thoughts. And with that, Commissioner Schroll, I yield to you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Sorry, I unmuted myself and then remuted myself. Thank you, Commissioner Hughes, for your able leadership of the AUG and then for the applicant for their presentation. As Commissioner Hughes noted, we're really talking about these kind of deviations. That's where our focus is this evening. So I'll start with Commissioner Geren.
Thanks so much, Ms. Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Hughes, thanks for your report. And as is traditional when we get something that's gone through the AUG, I'd like to just focus on, did the community have any concerns about this that you'd like us to discuss and think about?
Thanks, my good Commissioner Schroll. Okay, thanks, Commissioner Geren. This has been actually, I think the applicant did an even more engaging process than normal on this one, to be fair with them, which is a kudos to them. The community, as always, in all things, as are things, always had the same concerns. You know, we always love every building to be 100% affordable and a 100% net zero building, but they don't all get built that way. Of course, the areas, the community is very happy about the Lee Silver. That is a big deal for them, and they're very pleased about that. And then, of course, there's some frustration and frustration and then also happiness. Either, there's both sides of it with the Cleveland Street connection, which is less than expected, but the reality of the situation. And people have gone both sides of that. So with that, Commissioner Geren, I hope that answers your questions, the community sort of thoughts on this. And, you know.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Yeah, it looks really great. Thank you for bringing us to this tonight, Mr. Fernandez. And yeah, you know, the Pike, you can end up with comments on both sides of this. So that's very helpful, Commissioner Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. And one of the nice things about Teams is that it tells me who raised their hand first. You don't get that benefit in the room. So Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, Chair Weir. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Lunger for the presentation and for the hard work. I think the architecture in the building is quite excellent. I commend you on your restraint and keeping things sort of, you know, methodical and straightforward. And from what Mr. Hughes mentioned, it sounds like you also were very attentive to the Form Based Code process. I did have a few little concerns or a few perhaps red flags that I'd like to put down. Just one other one is that pedestrian passageway going next to the grocery store, which I think actually is a great sort of community, you know, these shortcuts, these blocks being sort of cut through is a good thing. So I appreciate that. I'm a little nervous about going from a 17-foot to what I'm guessing is about a 10-foot or 9-foot. Those tend to get a little dark and a little bit scary. And so, you know, I think as much as we can widen that or have a consistent width all the way across would be super helpful. And if I understood your plans correctly, I think the elevator shaft is only going down to the garage. So it might be actually doable to widen that a little bit. Now, I know that's, you know, you know, it's neither here nor there, but I think it would hugely improve that, I think, a really great gesture that you guys are doing. The other comment that I had was, well, I'll just go straight to, I think it was slide 21 I wrote down on that vertical element on the view from Columbia Pike, which you said was a really important view, which I agree with. That's a historic building. And even the curve on the building has some nice references, which, again, I appreciate. I just feel that tower is missing sort of a punctuation at the top or something. You know, again, just, I think the design and its restraint is particularly good. So I'm a little hesitant to almost make that comment, but I think just a little punctuation or something up there. There's a little bit of a gap or a little bit of a void that's leaving me a little bit wanting. But other than that, excellent project, and thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. I'm going to go to Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. I had a question about the alley on the north side of the building. And this is more a question for staff because, as you all may remember, there was a couple of car accidents that took place in alleys back in November. One involving a toddler, one involving a person, I think, on a moped or a scooter who unfortunately died. And so the county was organizing a task force of some sort to study alleys and alley safety. And so I was wondering if there's anyone here that can speak to, you know, has anything come of that? If anything did come of that, would that apply to this alley and all future alleys? Or because this is Form Based Code, it wouldn't necessarily. So I was, or is this grandfathered in that the safety conditions that are recommended by the county don't apply? So I kind of was interested in alley safety because this is a residential area and there's residential area just north of this new alley.
Thank you. And so we have been working in collaboration with DES on this. And so I guess a couple of things. One would be that the alley is a requirement from the Form Based Code. And so it is part of the regulating plan for that area. But as far as comparisons to other similar conditions, I think I turn it over to our colleague from DES who is joining us tonight. And so I believe Jane Kim is here to speak on that item.
Hi, this is Jane in DS. I'm not completely familiar with the results or where along the process that alley study is in. But our TENO staff and our Vision Zero staff have all seen this plan. And while they wish the other was a little wider, and I think, you know, there's limitations here with that entrance, with the historic building as well. And I just wanted to note that there is a CAPRA project as well in the vicinity that will be coming along with, I think, some restriping and things. And I think during that process, for instance, parked vehicles will be blocking the visibility of that alley so that, you know, cars coming in and out can see, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists and things and people moving along that frontage where the alley entrance is. And then finally, we're also coordinating with other DES colleagues and looking at that whole street with the Career Center project, the CAPRA project, and this private development project to make sure that everything with all users is as safe as possible. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you. Any other commissioners want to be recognized or ask any questions on this matter? I will add just then that I'm excited by the presentation, and I'm excited to see this move forward. And I'm very happy as well with what we've presented with, speaking in my capacity as one of the commissioners, not as the chair. Having recognized myself then, I will turn to Commissioner Hughes to ask whether or not there are any other matters that you believe need to be put to the commission or if you have a motion.
No, and I just want to say that I think Leo said the nicest thing I've ever heard about architecture on the Form Based Code. So I look forward in a few years to a decade when we do our next architectural view, our team here from MVA and Neville coming in to maybe give us some more thoughts of how we can improve. And I'm sure he would tell us, Leo, that some of the limitations of your ideas were held back by the cornice culprit topping rules of Form Based Code buildings, which are always a fun engagement of architecture, which I do not envy. So with that, though, I will begin this evening by closing us out by moving our motions. I move that the planning commission adopt the attached ordinance to approve the rezoning request from C2 Service Commercial Community Business District to CBP Form Based Code Columbia Pike Form Based Code Districts. Property is located at 2601 Columbia Pike called the Elliott RPC number 25-016-005 and 25-016-004 and 25-016-01.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's Commissioner Schroll.
That's correct.
And Commissioner Hughes with the main motion. And Commissioner Hughes, am I correct that that is the staff recommended motion?
This is the staff recommended motion. And as a reminder for my fellow commissioners, this is not a requirement that they rezon to the Columbia Pike Form Based Code. It's an overlay. So what they are choosing to request it as to open up the opportunity for them to enhance their sign availability access so that their grocer can get bigger signs at a higher fee.
Thank you very much for that actually quite useful clarification. Is there anything else, Commissioner Hughes, that you would like to offer in support of your motion?
I think it's a good motion.
Would anyone else like to be recognized on this motion? We'll call through the roll then. Commissioner Bagley.
Hi.
Commissioner Geren.
Hi.
Commissioner Hughes.
Hi.
Commissioner, will I tell me?
Hi.
Commissioner Morton.
Hi.
Oh, is still absent. I don't mean that to sound judgmental for the record. Commissioner Peterson.
Hi.
Commissioner Sarley.
Hi.
Commissioner Schroll. Commissioner Schroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Hi.
I vote I as well. The motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you again to the applicant.
No, 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 you just rezoned them. You didn't, you didn't, you just rezoned them. You haven't gotten them a building yet.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Hughes. I am eager to go to bed. So everyone who wanted to go to bed, you can blame Stephen. Do you have another motion for us then?
I do have another motion. This one will actually allow them to turn a spade and actually build their building. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend the county board approve the subject use permit in accordance with the Columbia Pike Form Based Code, Article 11.1 of zoning ordinance appendix A to construct the 247 multifamily dwelling units at approximately 51,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space with modifications for finished floor elevation for the ground floor and siting specifications subject to the conditions of the staff report dated, excuse me, February 12, 2022. Second. Oh, it's also. Dated, thank you, Commissioner Schroll. I seek unanimous consent to change the date from February 12, 2022 to January 28, 2022.
In my opinion, you have unanimous consent and the motion is amended. Commissioner Schroll had previously seconded, which is still the record. Commissioner Hughes, would you like to say anything further in support of your motion?
No, I look forward to this building coming forward. As I've said to all of my fellow commissioners, as we continue to always think about development opportunities across the county, as you consider the goals and benefits and wonderful things about the Form Based Code, do remember this meeting tonight where you had zero public comment for the application. And it's so important to think about that as we encounter edge condition planning areas across the county.
Indeed. Would anyone else like to be recognized before we go to a vote? So Commissioner Bagley.
Hi.
Commissioner Geren.
Hi.
Commissioner Hughes.
Hi.
Commissioner, tell me.
Hi.
Commissioner Morton.
Hi.
Commissioner Peterson.
Hi.
Commissioner Sarley.
Hi.
Commissioner Schroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Hi.
I skipped Commissioner Patel, but for the record, I need to note that I have called on her and that she is absent. And I vote I as well. The motion carries 10 to 0. Commissioner Hughes, you better not have any other motions for me.
I mean, we could go about, you know, doing the whole Form Based Code and sit through another three hours of major planning if you like, but I think, you know, ending at 11:13 is okay.
You would have to deal with Ms. Johnson if you decided to do that. I probably would too. So this business, this matter is, is concluded. Ms. Johnson, do we have any other items tonight?
No, we have no other business tonight. We'll pick up again tomorrow.
So we are recessed. I'll see you, I'll see everyone tomorrow at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen.
Have a good evening.
Yep. You too.